One second, I gotta open it to the public. Okay?
Okay, good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
And I'll read the opening statement, this is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom. On July twenty-three, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice. Of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton packet, Town Topics, The Times. Trentonian. By filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on July first, twenty twenty-five. And it has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to executive order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen. Notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. Was transmitted to the Princeton packet, Town Topics, and The Times. And was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, twenty twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same. To the packet, the Town Topics, The Times, the Trentonian Comcast Media. And by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex.
Thank you.
Yep.
Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mister Floyd?
Here.
Mister Schreiber?
Here.
Mister Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mister Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna? Mister Dawkins?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay. Uh, we have one resolution this evening and one application. So let's start with the resolution, it's case number. Z twenty-three dash six thirty-eight, two ninety-five, Western Way. Block eighty-seven oh three, lot ten. And in the R five T zone. A copy of the resolution was in your packets. And. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? Or if not? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm over approval, Floyd.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mister Floyd?
Yes.
Mister Schreiber?
Yes.
Mister Stein?
Yes.
Mister Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay, we have one application this evening. It's case Z twenty-four dash five eighteen. Lot seventeen, or block sixty-nine oh seven, lot seventeen. In the, in the B one T zone. Uh, Karen is the noticing of all in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay, thank you, Claudia is the applicant here?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chair, we do have a few people, I think, that need to be moved over, I don't know if you want to do that first?
Probably it's a good idea.
Um, we have Josh I C, Kelly O'Satch.
Join?
Uh, George Jackamar's in, John McDonough. And Benjamin Grace, oh, we got Benjamin in, John McDonough, excellent.
Okay, thank you.
We, we want to say now?
Excuse me?
Do we have everyone?
Uh huh, yes, we do.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, Derek, can you read your memo to introduce?
Sure, I'm gonna give it.
Eric, let me swear you in. You swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do, I don't know if you want to swear in Justin.
I will, I don't.
Dan and Elizabeth.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna hand off to them after this.
Dan, Elizabeth.
Now, we also have Victor Anoc K, who is the. Uh, traffic consultant for the municipality here as well.
And Frank, the M R A, the uh, fire official. Okay, she needs to testify.
Okay. And Elizabeth? Well, we'll. We'll swear her in when. She presents, um. The H P C memo, so we've got Derek. And Dan and Justin and Victor. And, uh, Mister Demoree. You all swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Derek, please begin.
Thank you, Your Honor, good evening. Um, application has been filed with the Princeton zoning board of adjustment by Witherspoon and Lee L L C seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, conditional use authorization. Variance relief in accordance with N J S A forty colon fifty-five D. Uh, excuse me, seventy D four, um, and bulk variance relief to construct a three-story addition with a basement level laundromat and associated site improvements at two fifty-four Witherspoon. Uh, Claudia, could you, uh, bring that near map up, please? Um, the subject site is, uh. Identified as lot seventeen, block sixty-nine oh seven, it's in the B one zone in the former Princeton Township. It's a zero point two-two acre site, it's located on the southwest corner. At the intersection of Witherspoon and Lee Avenue, the site contains a two and a half story. Masonary structure fronting on Witherspoon Street and a nine-space parking lot located towards the rear that has access via a driveway off Witherspoon. Site's currently occupied as the office of Joshua Zinder Architecture and Design L L C. Site's bordered by Lee Avenue, um. Directly to the north and single-family houses, uh, behind it, Witherspoon Avenue. Our street and across the street is the Avalon, um, on Witherspoon multifamily development and single-family residences to the south. And west, the applicant proposes to construct a forty-six hundred and seventy-three square foot addition to the existing building. Will feature a basement level laundromat and two commercial uses on the upper floor. The additional will contain covered porches along Witherspoon Street and Lee Avenue frontages. Green roofs and a mezzanine from the second to the third floor, the nine-space parking lot to the rear of the lot will be reconstructed to a six-space parking lot. Where one space is located on both this lot and the adjacent residential lot. The driveway accessing Witherspoon Street will be widened to combine the adjacent residential lot. Additional site improvements include ADA accessible ramps that connect the front entrance to Witherspoon Street and that protrudes into the public right-of-way. Retaining wall along Lee Avenue. Within the repu- uh, right-of-way adjacent to the public sidewalk, a paver plaza at the corner of the lot closest to the intersection of Witherspoon. And Lee Avenue bicycle racks, a green roof, roof-mounted solar panels and a waste enclosure. The applicant also proposes to install a closed-loop geothermal system to supplement the H V A C systems. Um. Properties located in the B one zoning district and is subject, uh, to the. Ten B two forty-six, two fifty-three, two fifty-four, two fifty-eight, and two fifty-nine of Article eleven, Division three of the Princeton former Township Land Use Code. Uh, the applicant is requesting a D four variance for floor area ratio in excess of that permitted. The construction of the building addition requires, uh. A variance in that, the maximum F A R is zero point six and zero point seven three six is proposed. The existing floor area of twenty thousand, or two thousand five hundred and fifteen square feet is proposed to be increased by forty-six. Hundred and ninety-eight square feet to a total of seven thousand two hundred and thirteen square feet, representing a hundred and eighty-seven percent increase in floor area. It's noted that the basement level laundromat is not considered floor area and is not included in the floor area calculations. Um. While the board's familiar with this type of variance, the applicant doesn't need to demonstrate that the site is uniquely, uh, suited for the use, it just. That it can accommodate any issues that are associated with the greater F A R. It does require five affirmative votes. Um, applicant also needs a conditional use authorization to use the adjoining driveway and to have the parking space over the, uh, the lot line. Um, they will be required to enter into an agreement. And, uh. It requires the off-street parking, uh, conditionally use requires all the off-street parking areas shall be located on the same lot as the building which they are intended to serve and shall be ready accessible. Whereas impracticable to locate all required parking areas on the same lot, they may be located. In whole or apart on a nearby lot, provided that a conditional use approval is obtained in accordance with the provision. Of Division four of this article, except that a conditional approval. Need not be obtained for parking up per. Next to a single-family house, such parking areas shall be located within reasonable distance of and shall afford safe access to the buildings they are intended to serve. No parking area shall be situated. So as to create a traffic hazard, uh, for either pedestrians or vehicle. Vehicles and legal assurance acceptable to the township attorney. Except for single-family hazard to the, uh, planning board, in this case, the zoning board shall be provided by the applicant that the required parking areas will be continuously available. The applicant's proposing one-off street space that is shared with the adjoining lot on Witherspoon Street, um. They provided a shared parking letter of intent with the adjacent lot owner, um, they should expand upon that a little bit, I think that property. I know it's for sale and I thought I saw a moving van there today, so, uh, applicant should bring, uh, some more information about that, which I'm sure they will. And in making the board's decision for approval of a conditional use, the planning boards will take no action. That will substantially impair the intent or the purpose of this article, the board may attach. Such terms and conditions to an approval of such an application. As in its judgment will serve. To, uh, preserve such public good or such intent of the purpose and shall be guided by the following principle, the local need for the proposed facilities. And whether or not the same is adequately served by existing facilities within feasible distance of the area to be served. And B, the existence of nuisance factors and whether or not adequate shielding by way of landscaping or distance from the near property. Nearest property line is provided to minimize. Such factors, the effect of the amount of traffic which the proposed use may reasonably generate upon existing streets. The safety of nearby uses such as schools and other places of congregation or public service, the peace and quiet. Of nearby property and the use of the public right-of-way for parking service or any other purpose. Um. There's, uh, several variances involved with this application, um, courts with ten B two forty-six, a minimum front yard setback, requirements ten. The proposed is seven feet five inches to proposed retaining wall for the accessible entrance to the front of the building. The retaining wall is higher than six feet six inches and it's considered a structure for the purposes of, uh. Buildings and setbacks in this section, um, there you have a height variance in accordance to ten B two forty-six, the maximum height requirement's thirty. Feet, um, the proposal is thirty-one feet ten inches. Um. The proposed addition. Matches the roof elevation of the existing building, however, the grade slopes down towards, uh, Lee Avenue, um, and it. Results in a higher, uh, average grade when you calculate the height and they need a height variance. Um, they require in accordance with ten B three oh seven, a required landscaper buffer strip, um. Requirement is a fifty-foot wide buffer strip and that would be at the, the back of the, the lot along the western. Lot line where seven feet exists and, uh, zero feet along the southern lot line where no buffer exists, um, this is like a parking. Landscape buffer, uh, to separate the commercial use from nearby residential properties, and then section ten B two fifty-five point two. Uh, neighborhood residential zoning standards, section I, the maximum. Driveway width at the property line, the requirement's ten feet and the proposed is twenty-three point five two feet, now this is a result of, uh, the use of the adjoining driveway, the combination of the two. Um. And there's a parking variance, um. Requirement is fifty-three spaces, they have seven spaces provided inclusive of one E B charging station, that is counted twice per municipal land use. Law, um. They also have assigned variance for the basement laundromat, um. The sign's not contemplated in the ordinance. So they also have two design waivers. Section ten B two oh three A four, parking space dimensions requirement is nine by eighteen, their proposal is eight by eighteen. At one parking space. And there's a request from section ten B two oh three B, the parking aisle width, uh, requirement for. Two-way aisle is, uh, twenty-four feet with ninety-degree turning, uh, angled spaces and the proposed is sixteen point five feet. That's a synopsis of the application, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address those. You're, you're muted, Steve.
Board members, any questions of Mister Bridger? Okay, I think it probably be a good idea.
I just wondered why, I'm, I'm just kinda like the icing or. The intro act here, um, I'm gonna hand off to Dan Weissman, he's gonna go over the site plan criteria, a few issues there. And then Justin Lesko has a planning memo, he will, uh, address, uh, some of the planning concerns and then finally Elizabeth Kim, um. Will, uh, speak to the historic preservation review, uh, memo.
Fine, no problem, good idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, and good evening, everyone, uh, I'm just gonna briefly, uh, touch upon some of the more important staff comments in the engineering and zoning. Memo as it relates to the site plan, I'm not gonna touch on everything, some of it is, uh, more procedural comments, um, that we would ask be made conditions of approval. If this project is approved. Um, so going back to the required, uh, landscape buffer strip, uh, the zoning ordinance requires a landscape buffer strip. Fifty feet in width when a non-residential use is proposed in the lot line borders of residential use or district. Um, the applicant requested a variance from this requirement, obviously, uh. Section T ten B dash three ten states that. In order, uh, in required buffer areas where natural buffer strip is deemed impracticable or inappropriate by the border jurisdiction. A suitable screening wall or fence may be substituted as approved by the border jurisdiction. So just asking that the board review the effectiveness of the proposed screening, um, the applicant is proposing to retain an existing board-on-board fence and supplement with some, uh, screening and a four-foot wide planting strip. Um. So just a, a reflection for the board and if the applicant can just address that a little bit. Um, regarding outdoor lighting for the, uh, parking lot, um. All, uh, section T ten B. Three seventeen point one requires that all outdoor lighting during, uh, non-operational hours of the business are used shall be turned off by eleven P M. Or limited to parking areas essential for night use, uh, just asking the applicant to advise on the hours of operation for the exterior lighting. Um. Regarding the, um, structures that, uh, lie within the right-of-way, both, both the retaining wall along Lee Avenue and the, um, pedestrian walkway and seating wall. Um, along Witherspoon Street will require, uh, uh. An approval from municipal council, be it a, a site license agreement. Um, or another agreement, uh, acceptable to council and, and municipal attorneys. Um, but the proposed retaining wall, uh, along Lee Avenue. Measures between two feet and four feet in height. Um, and protr- protrudes approximately eighteen inches into the public right-of-way along Lee Avenue and will abut the existing sidewalk. Um. Staff recommends that this wall be pulled back that eighteen inches, um. To the property line and that the sidewalk be widened, uh, to meet. The proposed wall in order to improve circulation within the right-of-way and if it is constructed on the lot, then it would not require, uh, municipal council approval. Um, we're also asking that the applicant consider some kind of striping or change in material. Along the driveway going towards the rear, rear lot. Uh, just to improve pedestrian circulation and cyclist safety moving towards the rear, there is some bicycle parking back there, that is where the ADA space is. Um, just wanted to see if the applicant can address something for that. Um, my last three comments, uh, have to do with, uh, ADA requirements. Um, so for the parking lot, the ADA standards require ADA accessible parking spaces. Located on the shortest accessible route from the parking space to the entrance they serve. Uh, the current ADA space is located, um. Appears to be that it could be located closer. To the driveway, uh, to shorten that distance. Um, so staff just request that the applicant address that, if there's a constraint from a grading standpoint, um, if there can be some regrading to allow that. Um. But, uh, it, staff, it, it would just have to be moved to that. Uh, shortest accessible route, which would be the southernmost parking lot, uh, parking space. Um. The accessible route, there's a, a diagram in the plans, the accessible route from that parking space. Um, to the entrance of the building is partially located on the adjacent lot. Um. Just asking that the applicant demonstrate this route on a grading plan, it's provided in a diagram in the details. We'd just like to see that on, on the grading plan. Um, and the applicant will also be required to obtain an easement from the adjacent lot owner for the permanent use of the accessible route. Um, thirdly, and finally, uh, a design waiver, as Derek stated, is requested for the drive aisle width. Um, we're asking the applicant to provide turning templates that indicate that vehicles can navigate, um, the narrow drive aisle width. Um, that is, uh, all I have at this time. Um. I guess I can turn it over, uh, back to you, Mister Chair.
Um, yes, thank you.
If there's any questions, I'm, I'm available, thank you.
I have one question for you, is there, the handicap ramp, does that project into the right-of-way on Witherspoon Street?
It does.
So that requires councilmatic action as well?
Correct, correct, it's, it's the, the ADA path, there's, um, some steps which would be permitted, um, and then there's also a, a seating wall. Um, near the corner of the intersection.
Thank you, okay. Um. Mister Bridger, who's next?
Mister Lesko.
Uh. Thank you, Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Mister Bridger, good evening, members of the board and members of the public, um, I just have a quick summary of the comments in my memo dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I will probably go a little out of order for those that are following along with the memo. Uh, I started by commending the applicant for retaining the existing building essentially as it is. And also providing a detailed history of the house and the lineage of its tenants, uh, to me, it showed the applicant's dedication to preserving the historic structure. Uh, however, I had concerns about the bulk enassing of the new addition and particularly the way that the top floor of the addition looks. Uh, which might technically be the same height as the highest point of the existing building, uh, which would require a slight height variance as Derek just mentioned. Uh, but it reaches out and it looks much larger than the existing building's pitched roof. Uh, practically, it seems to only add just under five hundred square feet of office space to this proposal. Um, and I would say keep all that in mind, um, as it pertains to the F A R variance that Derek also mentioned. Uh, the addition is also in a very, very prominent location, just being in the corner of a corner lot, especially as you're going southbound. On Witherspoon Street, um, and I know that H P C commented on that in terms of the relation of this proposal to the. Witherspoon Jackson Historic District itself. Uh, moving on, I was concerned about the pathway someone would take from that ADA space in the rear of the site. Then through the neighboring properties driveway, down a slight slope. And then back to the front on those ADA ramps that you'll see in a minute, uh, which include multiple switchbacks to get to the building, so I mean, in some ways, it seems like it's. The long, longest possible route, um, for someone who, who has those accessibility issues, um. And I question if there were any alternatives to avoid that, like an entrance in the rear of the building. Um, and keep that in mind for the parking conditional use auth- authorization, uh, request that Derek mentioned as well. Um, I also had some smaller questions that I expect the applicant will clear up about the proposed sidewall on Lee Avenue and an existing tree over there too. Uh, more generally though, I think the expansion is a good thing in this area of town. Where there has been an increase in residential density from the Avalon Apartment Building across the street. On top of the existing dense areas, uh, like the Witherspoon Jackson Neighborhood and the high school, uh, area. Um, this has led to an increase in businesses doing well in the area, which obviously is a good thing. Um, like those at two eighty-one Witherspoon Street, the office building, uh, next to Avalon. Um, and at the repurposed Princeton Packet Building at three hundred Witherspoon, uh, about a stone's throw away. Plus all the food uses in the area, uh, the newer ones, and my lights just went out. Um, I'll keep going though, uh, like the Meeting House, I think you can still see me. Uh, all the food uses in the area, like the newer ones, the Meeting House, the Elite Five Sushi, Delicioso Bakery not too far. Um, alongside the longtime kind of staples in the area like Tiger, uh, slash Mollesana Deli and Conti's. Um, I say all that to say, it's a good thing that the applicant is not only expanding their own office headquarters. But also adding in a small space for an additional business. And that space does not really seem conducive to food uses, um, which is also a good thing. As, uh, the recently adopted master plan warns about the commercial balance in Princeton. Leaning towards just food uses as is seen on Nassau Street and parts of Witherspoon. And I would imagine this smaller space would be a good one to allow for a business, uh, to kind of incubate and, and build up, uh, its presence in Princeton. Uh, the application also includes a laundromat, which is sorely needed in the area. Um, I obviously work not too far from this site on Witherspoon Street, but I also live pretty close to it. And I'm constantly seeing the working-class, uh, population of Princeton that keeps our town running. Have to take their laundry on their bike handlebars or over their heads all the way to the laundromat at the shopping center. Um, I think it would be much appreciated, appreciate it for someone who was working, you know, forty, sixty-hour weeks. In a manual job or a restaurant to bring the clothes that need laundering really in those lines of work. Uh, just that much closer to where they live and cut that trip on foot or bike with a heavy bag, uh. Uh, down in both time and distance, you know, particularly on a Friday night, um, when, when many of those folks seem most active doing that. Um, and I know this has been an important, uh, goal to the municipality for at least the five years I've been here. Um, lastly, I did also note the unique situation that the property is in, um, the building was built. Prior to our zoning codes, um, then the township zoning code i- that it's. Basically currently in is largely reflective of kind of nineteen sixties suburban land use practices in the former township. Um, however, and notably, a business zone was put on this area of Witherspoon Street. Where many residential properties were already in existence and continue to be in existence. Um, and then that was followed later on by the locally designated Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. Where the historic features of the neighborhood often conflict with the strict standards of that zoning. Um, and then just finally marrying all that together with the needs of the applicant's business end of Princeton in twenty twenty-five. Uh, so that's all I have to say at this time, I'm gonna see if I can get my light back on, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions, and Mister Lesko? Okay. Mister Bridger, next?
Uh, Ms. Kim is our next presenter this evening.
Elizabeth, we just need to swear you in, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, so the applicant, applicant came before H P C at their May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. And, uh, I believe that all the, um, board members had received the H P C chair, which is, um, her memo, which is dated July eleventh. Um, so obviously the proposed two-story addition is, um. Proposed on the north side of the existing building and it's connected by a glazed hyphen that is intended as a transition. Between the new and existing structure, so just to kind of, uh, go off script of the chair's memo, I just want to give a little history of the property. For the board members, so the house on the property is a colonial style built in circa nineteen twenty. It's rectangular, two and a half story with a raised foundation, stucco exterior wall and a gable roof. The Witherspoon Street facade is three bay, symmetrical and fenestrations align between the floors. There are paired double-hung windows located on each side of the centered front door and centered single, uh, double. Hung windows are above it on the second floor, there's almost a full-width covered porch with evenly spaced Tuscan columns and a hip roof. Centered wood stairs with simple balustrades lead up to the porch. On the south elevation are two windows on each floor above basement windows and a small centered. Flat, uh, gable end window and on the north facade are three windows on each floor and a shallow flat roof two-story wing. With a floor, first floor window that extends across the rear and their basement windows also found on that north foundation wall. Now, I'm not gonna be talking about the west elevation because H P C, uh, actually doesn't review that because it's not visible from the right-of-way. Um, uh, and as Mister Lesko had mentioned, that the applicant had hired a consult, called consultant, hence. Uh, excuse me, Hunter Research who performed historical background on the property and identified the house. As a, as Annetta V. Taylor House, which she and her family lived in until nineteen ninety-three. So a little bit history on Annetta, she was born in eighteen sixty-eight in Baltimore, Maryland. Her father was a professor and her mother was a prominent leader in the black churches and social organizations. Annetta married Alexander Taylor and with their nine children. Eventually moved to Princeton after living in Annapolis, Maryland and Philadelphia for a while. While in Princeton, Annetta and her family moved from house to house in Witherspoon Jackson Neighborhood. She worked as a laundress for Francis Patton, president of Princeton Theological Seminary, Seminary and former P U president. And worked for his family as well. Annetta's older children were employed in town as a porter, laborers, service workers or performing. Housekeeping duties while the younger children attended the Witherspoon School for Colored Children on. On Quarry, which is also to many is known as the Waxwood. In December of nineteen ninety-two, Annetta Taylor was able to purchase a zero point two three. Annetta Taylor was able to purchase a zero-point-two-three-acre parcel of land, which is a large lot in that neighborhood. It took several years before the house was completed, but by nineteen ninety-six, at the age of fifty-eight, she and her surviving children moved into their new house at two-five-four Witherspoon Street. Annetta died in nineteen ninety-four and bestowed the house to her oldest children with specific instructions that the property be kept in the family by passing it on to other siblings. The house was passed on from family member to family member, allowing it to be owned and occupied by the family until nineteen ninety-three, when it was eventually sold. The property exchanged ownerships for a few times until two thousand twenty, when the property was purchased by Witherspoon and Lee LLC and occupied by Josh Cinder Associates and Design. This property is identified as a contributing property to the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, and it is classified as Type Two Historic District, which is subject to preservation plan review for anything visible from the public right-of-way. So I first want to mention what HPC supported on the project. They very much like that glazed hyphen, which allows for a sensitive transition between the existing house and new addition. The glazing makes the new addition appear as a separate building. Therefore, the building on the property will visibly read as two separate structures, which will help to maintain an appropriate streetscape along Witherspoon Street. HPC was also pleased that the applicant retained the south elevation of the existing building. And they also very much appreciated that Hunter's research history on the property provided light about Anita Taylor, which was unknown. And they encouraged the applicant to work with the Witherspoon Jackson Historical and Cultural Society to install a historic plaque on the property so that he could be incorporated with the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District Neighborhood Tour. They also appreciated the fact that a laundromat was being provided, which they had felt was very appropriate for the population that live within that neighborhood and would be of great service to the general public there. But generally, HP felt there was a lot of attention and carefully planned design details to the Witherspoon Street facade of the building, and not enough attention or consideration to the Lee Avenue streetscape. And so when it came time for HPC to vote, they did vote on only matters that they had information on. They did not have all the consultants' reports, or the landscape plan, but that was just because it was inadvertently left out by accident. But they did vote unanimously to recommend your board endorsement of the application. However, this endorsement came with specific recommended considerations. So one is that they regarding the massing proportion of the top section, which the applicant refers to as a studio floor, which is the new two-and-a-half addition, HP felt, HPC felt that some of the architectural features, such as the upper-floor studios projecting roofline and overhang, which extended closer to Witherspoon Street than the other, than the existing house roofline, is too prominent and was reviewed as an aggressive design feature, which does not reflect historic building of the neighborhood. By improving the massing and diminishing the roofline features, HPC felt it would be less awkward. They also comment that the upper-floor studio windows on the Witherspoon Facing Street addition are a bit jarring. The fenestrations with true muttons, even in a modern style, would be more relatable to the existing house. The black window trim was also not considered compatible or appropriate, and though the applicant advised the color was selected to make the space disappear, HPC felt that this was not achieved. The relocation of the front porch was also of concern. The house, including the steps of the front porch, is very symmetrical, and shifting that porch entrance and stairs to the left bay was disrupting the balance of the symmetry. With the relocation of the porch stairs, the applicant also indicated the porch railings are proposed to be replaced with higher railings. This was not supported by HPC, and they further commented that that was not a code requirement. The switch back and forth of the new front walkway to accommodate the handicap accessibility they felt took over the whole front yard. The design was viewed as disruptive to the front lawn and not compatible to the Witherspoon Street streetscape. It was recommended the applicant consider an entrance to the building at the northeast corner of the building addition, where access could be provided at grade and an elevator installed. HPC further felt inappropriate that the addition is positioned on the north side of the existing building, which completely erases its presence from Lee Avenue streetscape. They did appreciate that the addition, small three-bay, will relate to the house on the adjacent property to its west. However, it was recommended that its elevation be slightly lowered to reflect existing grade and lower the building height with additional landscape at the corner. It was further recommended that the main volume of the addition be pulled back behind both buildings, about fifteen to twenty feet behind the Taylor House kitchen. This would retain the presence of the historic house along Lee Avenue and create separate volumes of buildings and produce nice shadow lines during the day and look less monolithic. And according to Hunter Research's summary of historic significance and integrity, where they state from a special perspective, the house's comparatively large yard anchored the northeast corner of the district, the relatively wider, three-bay, symmetrical center hall plan, colonial revival-style, single-family Anita, Annetta V. Taylor House finishes the smooth stucco cladding on the exterior and molded wood trim on both the exterior and interior, standing out as a large residence with ample lawn space. It was likely designed to reflect the aspiration and success of Annetta and her children. HPC commented that the placement of the addition should take into consideration retain the existing tree at the property corner and/or incorporate some corner vegetation so the house can have some room to breathe with some greenery. The Lee Avenue streetscape facing building addition lacks attention and design detail, as was given to the Witherspoon Street facade. And they recommend that the applicant provide a little bit more attention to that side of the building. HPC also recommended that any LED lighting should be in the warm spectrum of no greater to twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. And they also recommend that any new utilities be installed underground. And as always, HPC always appreciates the opportunity for them to offer their review and comments to your board. And if any of the board members have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or later. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Kim?
George, are you with us? Sorry to interrupt, Steve.
Okay, my question is, the chair's memo was issued on the eleventh?
Yes.
Has there been any dialogue between you and the applicant on these comments, conditions of the endorsement?
No. And actually, you know, to be fair, I believe that they received the memo, and Chris, you could confirm probably like maybe two weeks ago. So they haven't had it a long time. But they were at the meeting, so it shouldn't be a surprise either.
Yeah, two weeks ago was a fair amount of time. Given, okay, that was basically my question, because there is pretty substantial conditions. And it seems areas of disagreement. So I was hoping y'all will have had talked between then and now. That's okay. That's it.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have Dan Dovamilsky, the
Okay.
Board landscaper, and we have the fire official here. I don't know if you would like him to present his review memo or just mention any concerns that he has.
No, I would like to hear from the fire official very much, as well as Mr. Dovamilsky. But maybe we can take the fire official first, if that's okay? Yes.
There you go. Great. Thank you. Sir, would you like to just summarize your review memo? I think it's dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five?
Darren, excuse me, does he have to be sworn in?
He was sworn in.
I was. Okay. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So my board memo was concerning the laundromat going in the lower level of the new building and the fact that there was no suppression in the building. Laundromats are notorious areas for firefighters. I have not worked in a municipality where we have not had incidents in commercial laundromats. And being in the basement or a lower level of a structure is an area of concern for us, especially on that corner, where in my memo, as I point out, there's limited access for ladders and things of that nature because of all the wires and overhead obstructions. So our recommendation was to move ahead with a NFPA thirteen suppression system to help alleviate any of these problems. The sprinkler system would help keep the fire in check, keep it small until we can get there. And that's basically it.
Okay. I think it's a good recommendation. Board members, do you have any questions of the fire chief? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. You're welcome. Mr. Dovamilsky?
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
You do win on the background award, though. I mean, it's very nice. Your background is very nice.
Dan, I'm not sure if we swore you in, but if we did, we'll just do it twice. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I've submitted a report on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. There are several comments. The first one is relative to the existing trees. There are two existing trees on the property that may have been mentioned previously. One of them is a Calery pear, and one of them is a Japanese maple. They are fairly mature trees, not very mature trees. However, they are exotic species, invasive species. They're severely invasive. So the removal of those species could be considered a beneficial element ecologically to the community, their Calery pear and Japanese maple. So I think in my review, I didn't think it was actually feasible to preserve those trees relative to the proposed improvements. But the removal of them could be considered somewhat beneficial from an ecological point of view. I did also in comment two remark on the street trees, the trees between the curb and sidewalk. There are a couple of Zalkova trees. One of them is in severe decline, meaning it's failing. And it would be beneficial if the applicant could enter a dialogue with the municipal arborist to discuss replacement of that tree. In comment three, I commented on the Privet Hedge, which is a shrub, a tall shrub, hedgerow that is about four to five-foot height at present, which occurs along the entire frontage of this property, with the exception of the driveways. And with this proposal, that entire hedgerow will be removed. So it does currently provides a buffer between the property and the street. And that will be removed. In comment four of my report, I discussed that the rear property boundary at the back will become a commercial to residential land use transition line and is subject, and as such, will be subject to requirements for visual buffering in terms of dimension and the density of planting. At present, the offset between the parking lot and the property line measures eight feet. And the existing wood fence provides a physical and visual separation at the lower levels. The proposed construction will reduce this dimension of the landscape buffer strip to four feet, but they are proposing to retain the fence. And they are proposing to add a new hedgerow of cherry laurel, which is an evergreen plant, planted at five to six-foot height and spaced at three to three-and-a-half foot between the plants. The combination of the fence and planting will provide a dense year-round buffer at ground level. I also commented that a single tree, a small tree, Magnolia virginiana, which is a sweet-baked magnolia, is proposed between the building and the addition and the adjacent residential structure in a rather wide planting area that's provided. This tree will provide a filter buffer between the upper levels of the existing residential property on Lee Avenue and the upper-level office of the new building addition. Addition. This is a sensible landscape design relative to the dimensions allocated for landscape buffer as proposed, but it will not provide a complete visual screen between the uses at the upper levels. Moving on to comment five, there is a ten-foot-wide landscape strip that will be created between the proposed building addition and Lee Avenue sidewalk on this property. The planting within this strip will include understory cherry trees and a mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs at ground level. The addition of the cherry trees will function similar to street trees, which is desirable, since there is not sufficient space to, within the right-of-way, for new street trees along this frontage. And the presence of overhead wires will not allow for street trees. However, the proposed cherry tree selection should be coordinated with the municipal arborist. As the proposed cherry is not a native species, and the mature height and width of these trees might present conflicts with the wires, sidewalk, and the building in this location. So they may have to just consider what species to plant. And in comment six, I noted that there are several other plant species specified at various locations enhanced the proposed walkways and ramps, which are also non-native species, which present ecological concerns for the area. And that alternate species that are indigenous should be considered in place of the non-native or non-indigenous species. In comment seven, I noted that the corner plaza or terrace that is proposed at the lower level enters to the building is impervious pavers, as you probably already heard, and could be a very aesthetic and functional addition to the neighborhood, and that the applicant and board should discuss the potential benefits or detriments of adding some benches or seasonal planters or pots to this plaza. The details for this type of pavers, color, pattern should be reviewed relative to the streetscape sidewalk layout material. In comment eight, I indicated that the applicant should describe the location and size of any proposed or anticipated outdoor mechanical equipment or meters, and whether they are being screened appropriately. And the final comment number nine was that with the new landscape, they should make sure that they address how the landscape will be irrigated or watered to make sure that it survives and actually gets acclimated and survives. And at the minimum, we would typically suggest that they provide hose bibs on the building in some locations so that that could occur. So that's what I offered in my report. If there was any specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain those questions.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Dovamilsky? Okay, thank you very much for your report. Okay, Mr. Bridger, is that it? You're muted. That's it. You're shaking your head. Okay. All right, I do have a question before we turn the meeting over to Mr. Dugresia. Mr. Dugresia, do you feel that you have adequate time to finish this application this evening?
I hope so.
Okay, I mean, you you have you have our undivided attention.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, do you want to indicate, just because I don't know if we have public or anybody watching, how long or how late tonight do you expect the board to go? Would eleven be it or?
I'd like to hear from Michael first. Michael, what was your question?
Actually, I have two questions. One, we we had the Princeton Environmental Commission report. Is that being presented? It was in our packet. And it was pretty substantial. And my second question, due to some error on my part, I got confused regarding accessing Justin's memo. And when I just went, you know, planning memo and I days ago, I confused myself, but I just went online to try to find it and I didn't find it there. Now, are there any other board members that have never seen Justin's memo?
Claudia, did did you email that memo to everyone? I thought I saw your email come in saying that you were emailing it.
Yes, it was attached to the HPC. It was the HPC chair memo and Justin's memo, the planner's memo.
No, actually, you said you didn't include it in your packet delivery.
Right, because they were not ready at the time. I delivered the packages. So that's why I send them via email. When the packets were delivered, they did not include those two memos.
Right.
But they were emailed the same afternoon. If you, there are patches.
I I didn't see that, but that's okay. I my question still stands. Did all the board members get to see it and read the planner's memo?
I did.
Be honest.
Did anybody not?
Okay, so Eve's saying she did not. Stephen, you're shaking your head, I think.
Harland, Harland shook his head.
I I did not.
I didn't see it.
That's that's a problem.
Well, do you want Mr. Lesko to go through the memo more carefully? I think he just touched on some particular highlights. He could do that.
Yeah, if if I may, his memo isn't that long, and I think Mr. Lesko did a great summary. Our presentation this evening is a very detailed presentation. And we have all of the reports. We expect to respond to comments in all of the reports, including the planner's report. So I think that even if you hadn't read that, the memo beforehand between Mr. Lesko's summary and our very detailed presentation this evening, I think we'll pretty much have everything covered because we're going to respond to each of the comments in the reports.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, I would say the only things that I didn't cover in my, you know, I covered the comments and then the rest of my memo is the existing conditions and the proposal. The only things that have not been covered yet are the transit in the area and the parking in the area. So I'd be happy to cover those now if you'd like. I believe you're on mute, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I I would think that'd be a good idea. So we have the benefit of as much of your report initially as we can get. And then quite frankly, after the presentations, if the board members feel that that there's something lacking in their planning aspect of the review, then we'll call upon you again.
Excellent, thank you. So on the transit side, the NJ Transit six oh five bus line runs by the subject property on Witherspoon Street as it goes to the from the Quaker Bridge Mall all the way up past the ShopRite in Montgomery. The free Princeton Uni bus runs on Witherspoon Street and there are sheltered bus stops both on the northbound and southbound side of Witherspoon Street, one by the Little Pocket Park next to the Avalon Building across and then one about a block away in front of the Pennell Learning Center. There are metered parking spaces on the northbound side of Witherspoon Street on the block directly across from the subject property. So basically in front of the Avalon Witherspoon Block. There are also some on the southbound side or the same side as the subject property as you get past Clay Street on Franklin Avenue and on Henry Avenue in the area. Limited free parking can be found on Lee and Birch Avenues and elsewhere in kind of maybe a half mile from the subject property on both sides, both in Witherspoon, Jackson, and as you get towards the high school on Henry and Lee or excuse me, Henry and Franklin Avenue avenues. And I also mentioned the publicly accessible, underutilized paid parking garage that exists from the old Princeton Hospital and was incorporated into the Avalon Project across the street. That parking is available as well to the public. And I think that's basically it for now.
All right. All right, let's so I guess you asked this in terms of timing, Karen.
Yep.
We're obviously not obligated to start any new applications after ten thirty. And we can, we can close the the hearing at eleven o'clock. I mean, this is subject to board discussion, but my feeling is assuming it doesn't. There's so no reason to close it prematurely or at a break in a testimony. I would think that eleven would the any other comments on that?
We didn't get the last few words there.
Yeah, your sound was coming in now.
Oh, sorry. I know I had a problem. But since we I would say eleven o'clock would be it. And I'd like to hear from other board members just to make sure eleven's good. Again, if there's depending on where we're at, if there's a break in a testimony and it's closer to that. Part of it is we had a meeting last week, special meeting last week. We have our normal meeting this week and we have a special meeting next week. So it's, you know, we, you know, I want to try to give the board members some breath here. So board members, any questions about that? Okay, so we'll assume that eleven would be it tonight, Miss Karen.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dugresia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Christopher Dugresia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle and Wreath here on behalf of the applicant, Witherspoon and Lee LLC. First, I just want to thank staff members for their detailed summaries and comments. Like I said, we have a very detailed presentation. Hearing about it and seeing some of the renderings and photos will, I think, make it different. So you could see the whole picture. What's great about this application here is that you have basically an applicant or tenant that lives and works in Princeton. They're very familiar with the community and they've brought this very sensitive, thoughtful approach. The themes are the same themes that are very important in the municipality itself. You know, preservation, accessibility, sustainability, community needs. And you'll see that as we go through our presentation over and over again. As already touched upon, the first theme of preservation, we talked about how HPC really appreciated how we respected the history here and didn't just add on to the house, but actually created a glass setback separation so that the historic fabric of the building and the integrity of that site could be preserved. In terms of accessibility, there is none today. There's none. So the improvements that we focused on, we believe are inviting. And it is a site that was developed in nineteen twenty, so it brings with it a lot of difficulties. But you'll see how we've gone about and how we've created a plan that we think is both inviting and non-discriminatory. In terms of sustainability, there's just so much to talk about in terms of green strategies, green roof, solar panels, geothermal, EV charging, porous pavement, and the list, the list goes on, even the preservation of the house itself. And then last, the focus on community needs. And you've heard that echo throughout the comments of the municipal reports. You have a very much needed laundromat to support the neighborhood and surrounding communities. We're introducing a small neighborhood retail, which is basically a welcome addition to this business zone, which has really never taken off. And we are able to do this by keeping a local business or office, Josh Zinder's architect and design, to allow it to grow in place as part of the community with a lot of really nice elements in between. So I don't want to take up too much time because I know we've had a lot of details on this application already. So I would like to introduce my first witness, Josh Zinder, who is a licensed architect in New Jersey. And Josh, can we, we'll have to go through your qualifications and get you sworn in.
Excuse me, Josh has testified before us. He's a very qualified architect, in my opinion. I think we can accept him as an expert.
We appreciate that, Josh. Just to confirm for the record, you're licensed in New Jersey and your license is currently valid.
Yes.
Mr. Dugresia, just to clarify, Mr. Zinder is also a principal of the applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Zinder, you swear from your testimony?
Technically, I'm a manager of Witherspoon.
All right, so the managing member.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Screen taken away.
Yes, I think what we'll do is we have a presentation that is is it, can we mark it as A1, the PowerPoint as one exhibit and then?
Yeah, do you know how many slides it is, Chris?
Yes, I do. I believe it's a hundred and what is it, thirteen?
Hundred thirteen.
Hundred thirteen slides.
Okay.
As I said, detailed.
Excuse me, just let me add one thing. I'm gonna, I have to stand up periodically. So when I do, I'm going to just shut my monitor off, but I'll be listening in here. It'll only be a minute each time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Zinder, can you, what we have just sworn in, so actually, I'll let you tell us a little bit about the project and start, I guess, with the location and then the goals.
Okay, thank you for having us this evening. Here you see the existing Colonial Revival Structure at two fifty-four Witherspoon Street in the Witherspoon and Jackson neighborhood, which our office has occupied since June two twenty twenty one. As a clarification, our proposal is technically a two-story addition to this existing two and a half story structure. Although you can reasonably say the addition is two and a half stories. We received Friday afternoon the planner's report. As a result, we made some minor revisions to this presentation from what we had sent on Friday. But we felt that it was important to make sure that we're being complete and responding fully. The focus of this project is to maximize the utility of the property to contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood, maintain the historic asset, the Annetta V. Taylor House, provide community support elements, provide universal accessibility to the building uses and create a model of sustainability, create a highly contextual structure utilizing the form, scale and materiality of the neighborhood. Here you see the Sanborn map from eighteen seventy-five without the structure and the nineteen twenty-seven Sanborn map, which is the first time it shows up. The property has an interesting history. It was originally part of the Lee Estate, as in Lee Avenue, and functioned as farmland. In nineteen twenty-two, the property was purchased by Annetta V. Teller, who built the six-bedroom house sometime between nineteen twenty-three and nineteen twenty-six for a working-class black woman to build a home for her nine children during this period on a prominent street in Princeton is remarkable. Her history and that of her family is fascinating, some of which you can see in the historic report that we've submitted. In nineteen ninety-three, the family sold the house and it exchanged hands a few times. In two thousand sixteen, it was included as part of the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District as a contributing structure. Our office has occupied the property for the last four, four and a half years. We've been to coordinate with the Witherspoon Jackson Historic and Cultural Society to locate a historic marker that recognizes Annetta V. Teller and her family, which I'll show you where it's going later in the presentation. Here you see the property on a location map on the corner with the spoon of Lee Avenue. This is a map I'm sure you're all familiar with. It's the Towns Witherspoon Jackson Historic District map. We've highlighted the project site.
And just for the record, that's slide six, and now we're on slide seven.
Yeah, okay, I'll throw those into slide seven. Here you see in the context of the town, the site is a short walk to the central business district. Of note is that the property is a twenty-eight minute walk and a seven-minute bike ride to the only laundromat in town at the Princeton Shopping Center. When we moved into the building, I sat on our porch, watching day after day, individuals with bags of laundry walking to the shopping center from the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. We recently composed a survey of the neighborhood to better understand the need. Our surveys were distributed electronically by the community members and they were posted around the neighborhood and in some of the local shops. Most respondents were married, most were Spanish speakers, most were women and had children. Some of the information we learned was that fifty-three percent of the respondents use a laundromat for their laundry and another twenty-nine use shared laundry equipment in their building. The remaining eighteen percent do laundry in their home. Seventy-six percent of the respondents use the Princeton Shopping Center laundromat. And you can often see them on sunny days, rainy, snowy days alike, walking, riding with their laundry across town. Further, in asking if we had a laundromat at our location, seventy-nine percent said they would use a laundromat at this location. And all but eight percent would bought, excuse me, all but eight percent would walk, bike or take public transit. Here you see the building as it currently exists, the slight yellow hue on the stucco. You see here the existing Witherspoon Street streetscape. And with the proposed structure, in the context of the streetscape, the buildings across the street are in red dotted lines on the drawing. Here's the Lee Avenue streetscape, and you can see the contextual void at the end of the block with the larger four and a half story Avalon Bay Apartments looming large across the street. Looking at Lee Avenue streetscape, you can see the existing repeating gabled roofs that run down the street, which we pulled into our design. So these gabled roofs and we pulled out in our design. Here's a diagram of the property with the existing building. We will use this to outline the concepts behind the design. Here you see the glass hyphen connector we are using to separate our addition from the existing structure. The gray change along Witherspoon Street puts the corner elevation at the same level as our basement. This would allow access from the street to the basement of our building. We then add two contextually scaled.
You're you're cutting out here.
Am I cutting out for everybody?
No.
No, I can, we can, I can hear.
Me too.
I can hear.
Okay, I'll continue then. We then added two contextually scaled forms to the basement level, a gabled roof element, which picks up on Lee Avenue's repeated gabled roof lines, the context there, and a simple rectilinear form which picks up on the adjacent Witherspoon Street building forms. Connecting these elements, we have our studio space tying all of the forms together. After earlier discussions, earlier even before the HPC meetings with Elizabeth Kim, we decided to pull back the solid facade and open it up with a glass with with glass effectively pulling back the curtain of the facade to allow for a clearer view of the historic structure and lightening up of the facade. Here you see the entire massing of the building. We did look at other options for the site, including taking advantage of the AHO seven, looking at a mixed-use housing, office, retail solution for the site, which in the end did not allow us to have the apartment. which in the end did not allow us to have the apartments below our office, so it didn't work. But it was a viable, excuse me. We also looked at at the property as if it was being, taking advantages of the AHO seven um and uh and it would have been viable in the overlay. The solution was a ten-unit apartment structure above retail and above a laundromat space. Uh and this would have been compliant um in the affordable overlay. In looking at that comparison, our design is substantially smaller than the potential three-and-a-half-story solution. In the overlay, there is no front setback, which would allow the construction to go all the way to the sidewalk, which we are are pulling back from. Here you see the existing site plan. And with our proposal for the site, you can see the open space plaza we are creating on the corner. Looking at the new site, you can see our proposed shared parking spot and the combined drive, which is considered to be impervious coverage as it stands now. Um and it, as it is currently a gravel separator, you can see the slope surfaces, which will provide an accessible entry to all tenancies. And when I say slope surfaces, it's because these are not ramps. They are at a one-to-twenty slope and therefore a slope surface. Uh the slope surface walkways enables access to all tenants from the public side of the building. An accessible element in the back of the building would not provide accessibility to all tenants. And if it was, and if there there was access to a common, it would have to be through a common lobby, which would end up making the building even larger. You can see the green buffers, and please note the area where the cars are parked on the lot will be porous pavement. The signed LOI with our neighbor allows for our use during the day and their use at night of the parking space that straddles the property line. Uh in Justin's report, and earlier he mentioned, he mentioned that we have to verify, um talked about the new purchaser of the property, and that they will have to have a commitment to the LOI regarding the parking spot and the accessible path. Uh this past weekend, I met with the purchaser. Uh they have not closed on the property yet. Um however, it's close, because clearly the neighbor moved out yesterday. Um however, they did see the benefits for the new prop, for their new property as well, because the benefits for that spot are not just for our office, but for them as well. Um and we are aware that in order to finalize the compliance, we will need to have easement in place for this approval, so we're well aware of that.
And Josh, before you go on, just so they can see here, because I think it's a good picture, the two residential parking sp- spots, um the easement agreement will allow them to back up and use our area so that they enter Witherspoon faced forward rather than backing out into Witherspoon if they had to stay on their lot.
Correct. So moving on. Here you see the landscape plan. Um our landscape architect could not be with us tonight, so I'll fill in what I can here. However, we will work with the municipal arborist to reach agreement on all the planting selections. Um one item of note is the large tree in the corner of the property, which you see in red up here. Um we had actually thought it was over the property line, um but it's not, and it will be um staying, and we are maintaining that tree. Um the back of the property will have a buffer of tall shrubs, a new tree in addition to the existing um tree shown in the red circle. Um along Lee Avenue, there will be planter beds with understory trees in the planters between the slope surfaces. On Witherspoon Street, we will have green ground cover and some low shrubs. Our landscape architect provided a response to the landscape architect report, um which was sent through after Friday. I'm not sure if anyone's had a chance to review it yet, but um for items one to four and seven, we have no comment. Item nine, uh we would expect the plantings to be watered by hand um from one of two hose bibs that we will have on the building. Um possibly three hose bibs, we're looking into that. Um on landscape comment number five, the Environmental Commission Landscape Comment, um the proposed shrubs along the ten-foot buffer are both shade tolerant and native. Uh the cherries were selected for several reasons, not the least of which is they are a tree that will not grow to the scale that PSNG will cut them apart as they have done to so many trees, so many of the street trees on Lee Avenue. Um for item number six, the ground covers were selected so they will be sun-tolerant and grow in a bound planter. It is important that the plants and the planters stay green all year and are easy to maintain. English ivy and binka primarily spread through trailing stems, and since they are planted between paved ramps, their growth will be contained within the beds, while English ivy can also spread by seed. This only occurs if it advances into the mature stage and can grow vertically. In this location, it will remain its juvenile form, preventing flowering and seeding. All these issues will be reviewed with the arborist and resolution provided before, as part of the compliance documents. The basement level of the building will be laundromat. We currently have an LOI for a tenant to take occupancy and to back up other launder, launderer companies that are interested in the space. Uh we expect to have a sprinkler for the laundromat level as well. Um we just didn't have it documented as we thought it was premature for that, but we do intend to have a sprinkler for the laundromat. Here you see the first floor with the future tenant um on the first floor of our, excuse me. The future tenants in pink, our office is over here. Uh one thing to note is the new stair in the existing structure. When we moved in, uh we removed a a non-code compliance stair um in this location that's right here. Okay, and the fire inspector is requesting that we add this stair back as a result. Um our new stair will be code compliant, and as a result of that, we have to add a new door on the back of the building. The second floor uh is part of our studio. And the top half-story uh is an existing attic space and a new mezzanine, which will also be used as part of our office. The mezzanine and stair in the office are needed as the fire inspector requires that we have a second means of egress from the existing attic level floor, uh which doesn't exist right now. We did not run the hyphen connector up to this level, which would have allowed us to make that US connection. Okay, um specifically because that would have put it higher than the existing building, and the goal was to create two separate, really distinctive elements. The mezzanine needs to exist for this access. If we were to cut it back and reduce the FAR impact, it would not end up reducing the height of the structure. The volume would still be needed in order to get that to that stair. Here you see the roof plan with the green roofs and solar panels and the new synthetic slate and metal roofs. In looking at the elevation of the Witherspoon Street and Lee, excuse me, in looking at the elevation of Witherspoon Street and Lee Avenue, it is important to note that the slope surface that we are creating at the front of our building for accessible entry is not a ramp. It is pitched at less than one-to-twenty and will thereby not need handrails in order to preserve the view of the front of the historic dis- historic building and not clutter the front of the building with a field of railings. The low-pitched surface also allows us to green the front of the building in addition to accessibility. HPC had requested that we maintain the height of the existing railing. Um we have modified the design in order to do this, so those rails are, we're going to try to repair and match them. Uh please note that the door from the laundromat on Lee Avenue down here, uh this is used for emergency egress only, will be labeled as such um on the interior, and will have no exterior hardware. It is not an entry. And then we did that specifically because we didn't want people coming in and out on Lee Avenue, which we thought specifically of as a residential street. Um here you see the secondary eleva- elevations that face the back of the property. Looking at the materials used on the project, we start with the stucco on the existing building, which we intend to repaint to be closer to the original yellow.
And just to to reflect, we are on page uh, that was slide thirty-six, now we're on side thirty-seven.
No. So going on to thirty-eight. Uh we bring the stucco material over to the box form on the corner. However, the stucco material will be white in lieu of the yellow on the news, um in lieu of yellow, which is on the existing structure. The existing slate on the building will be replaced by synthetic slate as the existing slate is too heavy for the structure and needs to be replaced as it is failing. Um we spent considerable time spent considerable time working on our material options here. The roof cannot be repaired in its current state. It needs to be replaced in its entirety. Uh it reached that state before we actually purchased the property with roof leaks and falling slate pieces. Uh we considered replacing the slate with asphalt shingles, which have been improved in the neighborhood uh Historic District in the past. However, we feel that the visual representation of the synthetic material closely matches the actual slate, and we believe that a passerby would be hard-pressed to determine that it's actually artificial. And we did bring samples of that uh that slate, and we bring that. We brought samples of the that slate, that artificial slate over to HPC when we presented, and we bring that slate over to the new structure wrapping it around our studio space, providing a secondary facade service, which appears from the street like a roof treatment. Looking at the clavering siding on Lee Avenue houses, we bring that over to cover the gabled roof facade portion of our building. We looked at the brick on Witherspoon at our Witherspoon neighbor and brought that into the lower level of our building. And here you see all the materials from the context brought into the building. One of the elements that the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Places advocates for when adding to historic structures is the use of a hyphen connector, a glass separator to define the buildings clearly as historic versus the new structure of today. Here you see that connector in place. As I mentioned, we hope to make this structure a model for sustainability. We are hoping to reach net zero energy, incorporating a green roof, geothermal heating and cooling, solar panels, porous pavement, bicycle parking, EV charging, and all the lighting will be LE- LED, and we had planned for it to be three thousand K. We will certainly um review with Historic if they wanted to be twenty-seven hundred. Uh but that's something that we hadn't considered until we got that report. One of the concerns of the sustainability goals would be the view of the solar panels. We have set the panels back on the roof, so they will not be seen from Lee Avenue. The panels are angled south as shown on the drawings. Or from across the street on Witherspoon Street, the panels will be out of view. HPC asked us to pull the overhang back, which had previously aligned with the porch. We pulled it back a foot and a half, um eighteen inches. Uh this is as far back as we could pull it back and still screen those solar panels. The spacing of the houses along Lee Avenue varies, touching each other, from touching each other to almost twelve feet apart. Here you can see the adjacent structures spacing on on Lee, the gap from our new structure to the neighboring structure will be almost twenty-two feet. At the HPC meeting and in some of the reports, there are questions about the predominant street edge. Expressions that our overhang exceeded the predominant street edge, but the reality is that the existing and the new structure wall um are both set back by more than twelve feet from the predominant Witherspoon street edge. In addition, the porches on the existing and the new porch are set back from the predominant porch line by almost six feet. The addition is respectfully set back from the street. Another concern from the historic point of view is how we will be maintaining and preserving the existing structure. As mentioned, we are using synthetic slate to maintain the visual reference, and the stucco will be recoded to be closer to the original color. The only, the only windows being removed are the three basement windows, which are down here. Okay, uh which are up against the glass connector. Uh in blue, you see the ground floor windows, which will be blocked up. However, the original frames will be maintained. On the two upper floors, the windows in green will have their sills removed to convert these to doors, maintaining the frames. The other windows on the wall we intend to keep, which will allow for transfer light in from the glass hyphen. At the rear of the building, you can see the new door to the new egress stair, which is required by the fire inspector. It is our hope to replace the remaining windows on the building in the future. They are shown in yellow on this drawing. These windows were replaced by a previous owner and are now vinyl windows. We hope to change them back to wood clad. We looked carefully at the question of the corner lawn and whether it was done with intent or out of necessity. Out of necessity due to the time period with which it was built, and if it is a defining feature of the historic district, which we really do not believe it is. First, if we look at the divisions of the lots along Lee, we would be able to divide this lot into three lots that fit into the vernacular lot size on Lee. If we were to take the zoning of the B-one zone, then two lots would be viable on this property. Finally, when doing our geological investigation of the property, we discovered a large rock outcropping under the lawn on this half of the site, which would have made construction on this part of the lot in the nineteen twenties difficult and costly, if not impossible. The location that was selected for the original home was clearly a result of this rock outcropping. Placing a structure on the corner would have been more contextual, appropriately characteristic for that era and viable for the original use. This would have provided a protected lawn instead of the one on the corner. It would have also set up the ability to subdivide and add another structure in the future if it were not for the rock. We do not see the lawn as a defining feature, but rather as a happenstance that was more cost-effective solution rather than intended and defining feature of the original design.
We're on page fifty-five now.
Fifty-five, yes. We will go through the requested variances so that some of the questions in the report can be addressed from here. The existing building is thirty-nine, excuse me, is thirty feet nine inches and is compliant within the zoning. The new building will match the height, as mentioned, of the existing structure, and this variance is a result of accessing the sidewalk corner, which lowers the average grade on the lot. The difference is approximately twelve inches. The datum of the building height and the street is maintained.
So just to be clear, Josh, if the, if the um, the, the the grading didn't change, it would be the same height of the existing building.
It would be compliant, yes.
It would be compliant. And also, I just want to point out that if there was a development next to this or close by, or if it had happened on this property under the affordable overlay, the height for multifamily can go up to forty-five feet, three-and-a-half stories. So this, this is the limit of what this would be allowed to be built to, but there are uses where you can go up to forty-five feet in that exact zone.
Yes, you'd have to be, you'd have to be doing multifamily to take advantage. Next is the FAR variance. This variance is in large part um the result of the porches that we are including in the design. The porches are contextual and fit well into the neighborhood, and they add a significant amount of square footage. The next variance are result, excuse me, the next variance are a result of this property being the first property in the township, which does not technically exist anymore. And the fact that it abuts the four different zone, four, and the fact that it abuts four different zones, and that two of these zones are residential when it is a business zone. Due to these issues, the existing house in its entirety would be inside the required landscape buffer. The buildable area where the front half of our new structure would be, would be, you'd be allowed to build here. And I believe Justin noted that these, these buffers were really intended for, you know, down on two oh six or an area where there was really a large commercial impact, and this is a different type of business zone here.
Yeah, in in the B-one zone with the properties along that side, I know it's off the 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 sheet here, but they're all the same depth, basically, so they, for them to put a bu- none of them have a buffer, not even the one that is, has a different depth, which is the Princeton Packet Building. But um essentially, you couldn't build the F-fifty-foot buffer anywhere along here for that back R-four zone and um, yeah.
So slide sixty-two, if we were to be in the business zone in the borough, instead of in the township, there is no requirement for this landscape buffer. And the RB zone is a block away from this location. Um and these are the setback requirements that would be for the RB zone, and so you can see that our entire building would fit within that. Um and uh the landscape buffers are would, are even larger than the setbacks. The driveway variance. The driveway width is really in existing condition. Our neighbor's driveway and ours are connected with the gravel area. Which is already considered to be impervious. Um our civil engineer will talk about this a little bit more. Um. The L O I we have signed. Um and we intend to move forward with the new neighbor, will allow space for both of us to have better maneuvering space. In the parking area and drive in addition to a shared parking spot, which, which we previously showed. Um and. Um. You know, we currently drive over each other's property lines all the time. That is just the reality to allow them to to maneuver out. Um. You know. It it often happens when there's a delivery or something like that and and we do the same. Um. The parking variance, please note, uh most of our staff. Parks at the lot across the street, which has hundreds of available spots, which. Our traffic consultant will talk about um a little bit. Uh. The required parking indicates fifty three spaces for our use in the B one T zone. We are providing ten, including E V and E V ready spaces. Uh this zone was in large part designed to be for businesses at the periphery of town like on two oh six. Which would necessitate the use of a car. Our uses are community oriented and will have many pedestrian users. If you look at comparable zoning in the town, the R B zone down the street. We would be required to have seventeen, which would be a partial variance of only seven. When most of our staff will be parking. At the lot across the street. Uh if we were to take advantage of the affordable overlay, the A H O seven with ten apartments, the laundromat and retail. Use, uh we would be required to have five parking spaces without any E V. So effectively, it is our office, which is the differentiator and not the retail or the laundromat. Um and we have resolved parking for our staff. We currently leave six spaces in the parking lot. Also. Um the lot also has spots paid for by the hour. Um and the lot is mostly empty. Our parking consultant will review this further, but you can actually see here on the roof of the parking lot. Um, you know, there's. It's mostly empty. Um.
And and if you look at Google Maps and do the uh older photos, you could see in every one, there's very few.
Yeah.
They they basically look like that.
Uh slide sixty nine, the signage variance. Slide seventy, uh we plan to have three facade signs for the three different occupants. The signage variance is required for the signs. Um. Because we're putting sign on a basement level for the laundromat. Um as each first floor use is permitted to have its own signage. Um it will, it. The laundromat will have great access, so. It it acts in the same way the first floor would. Um the signage will be a reverse halo lit. So it's not to spread light out, but rather. Just allow highlight of the edges of the signs. The front yard setback, the wall variance. As we mentioned before. We'll have an accessible path that does not require railings um and is not a ramp. On slide seventy three. Uh the challenge is that the landing of this surface at the first floor will require support and a wall. It is this wall that is within the setback. The front of this surface aligns with the predominant porch line we previously discussed. We are leveraging this space to support our sustainability goals by providing covered bark. Covered bike storage um at this location underneath right there. Um, we have separate bike storage for our staff at the back of the building and open bike storage um next to the building as well.
So to just be clear, our front yard setback is not the building, but to the retaining wall, and that's why we're triggering the variance.
It's it's this little area now.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And that's slide seventy three.
Right. So slide seventy four, from above, you can see the overall context. One thing to note again is the large number of empty parking spaces in the parking lot. Our parking assault will review that further. Here you see it with the new structure and the relationship to the parking lot, which is only a block and a half away. Looking at the site from above the corner as it currently exists.
We're on slide seventy six and seventy seven.
With the new addition is seventy seven. Here you see the existing site looking down Witherspoon Street. On slide seventy nine, you see it with the addition. Here's the existing from across Witherspoon Street. And on slide eighty one. This image is the image that we presented to H B C. Um and there are several items that were noted. The rendering did not properly illustrate. Um the building as intended. The second floor windows um are double hung windows, but they appear to be fixed in black. In color in the image and did not show this condition properly. The clear story glazing um also showed through as dark shadowed glass as if no light were entering. And the overhang we're seeing is too, coming out too far is illustrated. And also the railing on the front was considered too high. So we've made some changes, um. We have revised the design and corrected the image. Uh you can see the second floor windows are now white and they are double hung as requested by H B C. The clear story windows are are not a field of black, but rather do allow light in, which provides relief from the Witherspoon Street form. You can also see the shift back of the cantilever. We show the existing structure as it currently stands. But please note that when the project is finished, we will no longer need window air conditioning units. Um we will be keeping the rails at their existing heights as requested by H B C. And you can also see here the historic plaque, which is right here. Um which will be installing to acknowledge the history of the Taylor family and the building.
And this is slide eighty two, um could you?
Well, this.
That was like.
This is slide eighty two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So now slide eighty three is the view looking down Lee Avenue. And with the new addition, you can see the gable roof form on the addition, you know, which. Which is here and that mimics the gable roof forms that run down Lee. Um and the studio step back from the streets. Our studio is set back there. Okay, you can also see uh the raised garden walls that are here that run down down Lee. Um you can see them, they they run all the way down Lee, so they're on every one of the properties going all the way down. Here's a closer view.
Josh, are you gonna address the uh comment in the planners report? Is that somebody else about the wall?
About to mention it.
Okay.
Okay, slide eighty eight. Here you see a closer view from across the street on Lee Avenue. Uh the existing structure uh cannot be seen from Lee until you are directly across the street. So if you were down here. You can see, see the upper part of it from above the hedges. Okay, but you really can't see the the whole structure. Um. And then here you see it with the new addition. Uh the street tree and the tree on the corner of the property. So this tree here, you see the top of it up here, that does, is actually on the corner of the property. We are maintaining that. We are not getting rid of it. Um. And uh and then just because it's hard to see our building behind all those trees. Uh we sort of down toned it off with some transparency. Uh you can see the planters along Lee. Okay, which are that we're proposing here. And we're aligning with the the planters, that that planter wall that's running down Lee. Um and we can move them back and if the town. Wants us to move them back, then we will. Um but we do think that aligning with the contextual wall that runs down Lee um is a better design solution. And stepping it back. Um, you know, then stepping it back. Um and we recognize that this is a right of way agreement, but. Contextually, this wall exists and that's why we're aligning it with that spot. Um, you know, and the green planters again set us up. To have trees, as mentioned by the landscape architect earlier. Um that will grow up and not have to be damaged by the by P S E N G and the electric plants. Slide eighty eight, as I mentioned, we engaged Hunter Research to do a historic report on the property and took. And and to take a close look at our proposal, a copy of the report was provided to you. Slide eighty nine, in looking at the design approach. We believe this project is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Places. With regard to the existing structure, we remu- we remove no distinctive features from the contributing structure. We are replacing the roof and repairing the and painting the stucco, the rata trim and the porch elements. Matching the existing conditions. We plan to replace the windows to match the original windows in the future. We will be acknowledging that of Taylor and family and their history of the colonial revival building with a plaque on the property. With regard to the addition. The glass hyphen separates the addition from the contributing structure. The materials used are sympathetic to the existing building and context. The massing of the building echoes its surrounding context without creating a false sense of history. And finally, if the addition were to be removed in the future, the original structure can easily be restored. Slide ninety. We believe this. Proposal will promote community oriented tenants in the laundromat, our office and our future occupant as well. The addition fits well and is respectful of the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District and complies with the Secretary of Interior's. Guidelines for Historic Places. The height proportion, solid void relationships, scale of the proposed addition are all visually compatible. With the existing structure and neighborhood. The relationship of the materials, texture and color of the facade and roof are all are also visually compatible with the historic district. And enrich the visual landscape. It does not adversely affect the character or appearance. Of the district or the relationships among the structures. It does not adversely affect the exterior architectural features or character of the contributing structure or the neighborhood. History does not stop. We are continually making, making it. The buildings in our town reflect that history and are markers for how things change. Our town's landscape is a quilt of that history. We strive in all of our projects to be sensitive and respectful to that history, the neighborhood and town. This project is appropriate to the scale, materiality and sight and is respectful of the past while not creating a false sense of history. In conclusion, we believe the project to be sensitive to the historic chara- character. Of the contributing structure will support the well being of the neighborhood and the historic district. It promotes the conservation of contributing structure within the historic district. Engages sustainable practice and practices and resources. It is appropriately scaled for the property and incorporates the best features of design. To create a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. I will now turn it over to our civil engineer.
So.
Excuse me one sec, excuse me one second, um. Do you, I just want to know if the board members have any questions of Mr. Zinder.
I have one question. One question.
Go ahead.
Real simple one, um you said you're going to um. Put a suppression system in the laundromat.
Yes, sprinkler system.
And the. The um fire official memo said recommended suppression the whole building. You're not doing that?
No, I'm well. If budget allows for it, we would, we would definitely look to do that. Um but our understanding of the 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 memo was that the laundromat was the risk. And honestly, we were planning to do that even before we got the memo. Um as it is uh. Good practice um for laundromats to have sprinklers. Um. And the square footage of the rest of the building doesn't require that we have have a sprinkler system. Um. You know. It is a large budgetary item. Um if we can avoid it financially, it would be better. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I, and I hear what you're saying. You said your understanding of the memo.
Demore is here, maybe, does the board want to hear from him to clarify that?
Yes.
Well, the. Yeah, but the memo says suppressing system throughout the building.
Okay, that Michael's question was the same as mine, but I think I'd like to hear from the fire official.
Yeah.
Can you still hear?
I can't, I can't see because this, the uh. The slide presentation is on. Okay. Oh.
Like he's here. Doesn't look like he's here. Okay, well, he's, he's not here, so. We can't ask him the question, but we will have to get, I think at some point, we will want to get a comment from him on this.
And we can, we can certainly review it with him. Um the challenge would be running the sprinkler through the existing structure. Um would have um significant impacts on the on the structure, so. Um but we can certainly review that with him and and. Well, we can review it with him.
Yeah, um. Fine, that's, that's, that's fine. You know, it, my reading of it, it didn't say. The existing building. I I took it as meaning the new building that has.
And that might be a possibility as well.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with Michael. It puts the three separate uses in there, especially the laundromat. And then just a minor item. But looking at the exiting out of the addition on the second floor. It again, minor. Uh code issue. I don't know if it has the remoteness issue. The stair has the remoteness issue. That would be required, but you'll figure that one out.
Okay, we we've reviewed that. It should be fine. Um. But we will have to resolve that before we submit for permit, no matter what.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Zinder? Okay, let's move ahead. Thank you for your presentation. Very nice.
I had two questions.
Yes, oh, go ahead, please.
Um, and I'm. I wouldn't be surprised if you answered this earlier, but I, if um if you could just tell me again, are your offices which are now in the. Um in the house that you're working out of. Are they, are you gonna be expanding or moving? How, where, how will things change when, as far as your offices? In the.
We will no longer be occupying the basement or the first floor of the existing structure. Um the basement will be um converted for utility for the the property. And the first floor will become um. Some sort of retail establishment for the community.
You'll you'll continue to use the top floor and then the connection to space in the new building. Um that and the mezzanine.
Yes.
And the, uh I guess, is it, is it that the half floor above? Is that an attic?
There's an attic level above that's currently, that we currently occupy and the second floor, which we currently occupy, and that's what we're connecting to.
You bring up a question. What, what, Dave, is that? Do you have any other question?
I. I also wanted to ask about the um the the ramp and what some. Questions or comments had been about how that seems to be a. Uh um, a long way for someone to go and I, um I'm sure you didn't do that on purpose or intentionally make it.
I mean, that that's, it's um, it's a, the civil engineer will talk about this a little bit, but it's a one to twenty slope. Um any steeper than that, we would be required to put handrails um on front and. Um honestly. You know, my, my father was wheelchair bound for a number of years before he passed away and I wanted to make this building fully accessible. And that was an important part of the project for me personally. And this is, I can say it's most likely not the least expensive path, but it is the only path that would allow full accessibility to all components.
Railings would just add a certain degree of safety.
It would be, it would be terrible if we put railings on the front of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wasn't even thinking about, I was, that wasn't on my mind so much as just if. It sounds like this is the best. Most reasonable place to put it, rather than, I think there was an idea, could it have been in the back? I don't know.
It's, it's, I don't know the exact type difference. It's roughly four feet. We have a whole bunch of stairs that we go up from the back parking lot. So it's the same, same challenge that we have in the back. Um and if we did put a ramp back there, then we would be impacting the parking that we are having. Um, you know, and there's no clean way. To put a lift in back there either, um that would allow you to get access to both structures.
Thank you.
One, one last question on my part. Um, what type of retail do you envision in the first floor of the existing building?
Um something that's community related. Um. I mean.
Like?
A shoe store, I don't know, uh something that we've been missing in town.
Okay, alright.
Tailor shoe store, I mean, I think that's the, that's the goal. Um and and it's certainly not to have a food related um element here.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, the size and location really adds to like those service type. You know, whether it's a, some cutting hair or shoe store or something, you know, some small retail. Some cutting hair or shoe store or something, you know, some small retail, I mean, that was sort of the idea to help. Um, you know, um. Give a, a different size or a kind of a diversity to some of the, the, uh, retail stores that you have down there, which.
And I will say, I will say it'd be wonderful to get an entrepreneur from the neighborhood who's interested in putting something in, um. You know, that's, that's sort of the, the goal of so much of this building is to make it a neighborhood component.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Zinder? Okay, let's keep going.
Civil engineer.
Okay, our next witness is Kelly Osuch, Kelly, um, we, you have to be sworn in and then we can go through your credentials.
Hey, I don't, I can't see him on the screen because you've got the, um. The slides up, but Mr. Osuch.
There he is.
Very good, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your education and credentials?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech, I graduated in two thousand and twelve. Uh, since then, I've been practicing civil engineering in the state of New Jersey. Uh, designing and providing testimony on similar developments, uh, to what's being proposed here. Uh, I have a professional engineering license within the state in good standing. Uh, and I've, as I've kinda noted, I've testified before various zoning, planning and land use ports throughout the state. In addition to a license in New Jersey, I also have a professional engineering license in Pennsylvania, New York and Florida. And while I won't be giving planning testimony, I also have a professional planning license in the state of New Jersey as well.
Okay, thank you, I, we all recognize Mr. Osuch as a, an expert in his field, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna continue with the, um, scene A one, um, exhibit, we are on slide.
Other, other screen, Josh.
Oh yeah, we're, we're. That's a preview of what's coming up. Um, so we are, I believe we're on slide, um, ninety-one. Yep.
Yes, okay, you can go to the next slide, Josh. All right, sheet ninety-two, so, uh, I'd like to introduce the existing conditions of the property. Uh, property is known as block sixty-nine zero seven, lot seventeen on the tax maps. Uh, the image shown here is the existing condition plan which locates the property within the, the municipality. Uh, the property is a point, zero point two two four acre property or nine thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, it's a rather square property, if you're looking at it, it's generally, uh, square. Uh, property is located within the B one business district. Um, and this property is relatively unique in the zoning perspective in that it's located adjacent to. Multiple different zones, uh, it is. Right at the border of what was previously the borough, so to the south. Is, uh, the borough and lot fifty-six, which is the shared property or shared driveway access that was talked about. Uh, previously, that would have been within the borough, this property would have been within the township, so it's the first property within the township. What was previously the township.
A, a, and I believe the borough wraps around it, so the property across the street was also the prior borough.
Correct. Um, the, the. Property across Witherspoon or to the east is within the M R O, M R R O district. And that is a multifamily development, the Adlon Development. Uh, property is bound to the north by Lee Avenue, um, and then along Witherspoon across is a. Uh, further business and commercial properties. Uh, and then to the east and the south are residential properties, um, within the, or. Uh, so the property is accessed via a driveway off of Witherspoon Street along the southern property boundary, which was discussed previously. Um, that driveway opening has a shared curb cut along Witherspoon with the neighboring property. Um, and along the, the southern property line. There's a gravel strip that straddles between the two properties and has effectively been operating as one driveway between the two properties. Um, in the past. Property contains a two and a half story office building, the building height as measured per the ordinance is thirty point five eight feet. Uh, which we've noted is existing non-conforming, cuz the zone, the B one zone allows a thirty foot max. Uh, the rear, in the rear of the property or the eastern portion of the property, uh, there is an existing nine stall parking lot. Um, it's worth noting that while there are nine parking stalls there, they are all substandard from current code. Um, the width of the entire aisle and parking length is twenty-nine feet. And it's really a sixteen foot wide aisle and a thirteen foot wide parking stall length. Uh, which doesn't meet standards. There's also no ADA parking in the rear, um, which is also doesn't meet code. Uh, the parking area is surrounded by a railroad tie curb, which, uh, generally follows around. And that limits kind of that parking area down to that sixteen foot wide aisle that I mentioned. Uh, property contains a, um, lawn area along the northern portion of the property. That, uh, ties into the corner of both Lee and Witherspoon. Um, and then the, uh, along the eastern boundary beyond the parking lot, there's an existing wooden fence. Along the property boundary with the residential property. Uh, and then lastly, as far as landscaping goes, there's a hedge row along Lee Ave. And Witherspoon that kind of, uh, bookends the property and, uh, ties the corner together. Uh, the, the image shown also notes there's a, a green flag as we're having it. Of the tree that was missing from the original survey. Uh, Josh mentioned, we will locate that and, uh, the intent is to maintain that tree through construction and not remove it. Uh, so as far as like elevations on the property, the. Property is kind of perched up off of both Witherspoon and Lee Ave, so it's. Low at sidewalk elevation and then there's a very steep grade, uh, right along the property line, right along those hedge rows that. Come up to a perched relatively level elevation. Um, and then once you get up to that elevation, the site's up at approximately a hundred and seventy-two. Um, and then again, kind of drains back out towards Lee and Witherspoon where the low spot. Is right at that corner where the ADA ramp is proposed and that elevation's down at a one sixty-five and a half plus or minus. Uh, and then the property is served by public utilities, water, sewer, gas and electric. Uh, so sheet ninety-two, you can go to sheet ninety-three. Uh, and sheet ninety-three is illustrating the proposed demolition, um. So a portion of the parking area in the rear that is hatched with a slide. Diagonal lines through it is proposed to be removed for the construction, the railroad tie curb. Around the entire parking area is proposed to be removed and then the hedgerow that we. Noted along Lee and Witherspoon would be removed along with two, um, individual trees. Uh, and then lastly, the work, uh, the stairway and, um. Concrete walk that ties the existing porch of the property would have to be relocated. Uh, as I'll get into with the accessible path that is being proposed. Now you can go to the next sheet, Josh. So the proposed site plan, this is, uh, slide ninety-four. Um, the applicant's proposing to construct a two and a half story building addition. Uh, this addition will result in F A R of zero point seven three nine. Where point six is the maximum allowed, so there is a variance being requested for the floor area ratio. Um, the setbacks of the structure which Josh previously mentioned, um, from Witherspoon, there is a. Proposed front yard setback is seven point four two feet, um, which as Josh went into in his exhibits is really for the. Uh, retaining wall associated with the, uh, ADA access path and the bike storage in the front yard. Um, but the general building line is beyond the ten foot limit and is actually at thirteen point three three feet. From the property line. Uh, the Lee Ave front yard is compliant, it is proposed right at the ten foot setback. And then our side and rear yard for the building are compliant as well. Uh, so. The ADA access on the property, uh, or for the property is provided via. A concrete walk that switchbacks as the elevation changes in the front. Um. Mr. Zinder and I had gone through a lot of iterations of designing this ADA path in the early stages of the site design. Um, as Mr. Zinder noted, there was a real goal of trying to avoid. Putting in handrails in the front here as they, uh, aesthetically, um. Would take away from the structure and the streetscape, uh, so we designed this. As best as we could while maintaining the less than five percent slope along that entire path. Uh. As far as. Doing that, there was a, uh, proposed, or there was the existing sidewalk. Or existing walkway and access point along the existing porch. That has to be relocated to make the elevations of that concrete walk path. Work and it is being shifted to, on this image, to the left, which would be to the south, um, a few feet. Uh, in addition to the concrete walk in the, in the front, there's also a proposed paver patio area. Along the intersection or near the intersection with Lee and Witherspoon. This plaza area will act as the entry and gathering space for the basement floor or the laundromat area. Uh, and the ADA access to that will be through that paver patio area from the public right away. And I think it's, we'll get into the ADA parking in a minute, but I think it's worth noting that. The uses on this property, as Mr. Zinder noted, and I'm sure the planner will also get note as well. Is all designed to have a lot of community interaction and community aspects, so we believe that the main. Pedestrian access path of the community is along Witherspoon and at that intersection with Lee. So we believe that this, these concrete walks and the access path are located in the right location to provide. The community from the public right away, the access into the property. While also allowing for the ADA stall in the, in the rear with the parking to utilize that ADA path as well. Um, and so as we get into parking, um. There are six physical parking stalls proposed as part of this project. Uh, and they are located in the rear or the eastern portion of the prop, uh, property. Um, there are four stalls that we will have as make-ready E V stalls. Uh, we show two pedestals and each pedestal would in theory have two connections, so there would be four stalls. Uh, we show, or we're proposing one ADA van accessible stall. Uh, and then one stall would be a compact or a, a short stall. All of the parking stalls will have an eighteen foot length, which if you heard the existing property or the existing conditions. Are all thirteen foot long, so it's a significant increase in getting these closer to being compliant. Um, but the aisle will still be sixteen and a half feet. So it's a little bit larger than the aisle that's currently there, but it is still substandard. Um, so for a matter of parking requirements due to having four. Make-ready E V stalls, we technically provide ten stalls as far as the parking requirement goes as far. With the credits the state statute provides, but again, there's only six physical stalls being. Uh, proposed on the property with one straddling along the property line. Uh, that would share access with, uh, the neighboring property, which is subject to that agreement with the neighbor. Um, as Mr. Zinder noted, the, the uses require fifty-three parking stalls, so we are asking for a variance from the number of parking. Provider. Um, and there were some comments and questions as to the location of the ADA stall. Um, so we believe the location provided is the most efficient location as far as the site design goes and the site grading. Um, it also allows for folks that utilize that, um. That stall that may not be wheelchair bound to access the rear of the, the. Covered porch via the stairs right next to the property while also still providing the accessible path. Uh, to the, the frontage and then ultimately into the public right away, which then they can, um. Access that concrete walk and the paver patio plaza area to enter into the various floors of the structure. Uh, providing that ADA access compliance that's required. Um, so again, we think it's the right location, but, um. If, if there was comments from the board's professionals or the town's professionals, uh, I'm sure we can work with them on. Why we were locating where we are. Additionally, there was a comment, I think it was in the, um, traffic engineer's report. Um, and he had a question as to the width of the ADA stall. Um, we're proposing it at eleven feet wide with a five foot, um. Access aisle, which is directly out of the ADA code, um, for the van accessible stalls. So in addition to the parking, Mr. Zinder also noted the, um. Retaining walls or the planting area walls along Lee Ave, again, they are. Located within the public right of way and again, it was intentional to line up aesthetically with the neighboring wall. Uh, so we understand that we would have to get, um. Approval from municipal council and I think the, the design intent is to tie in with the neighbor. But if for some reason municipality does not like it, uh, we would certainly agree to move that wall back into the property. Um, and adjust the sidewalk accordingly based on the staff's recommendation. Um, and then likewise, along the Witherspoon access, there is a. Uh, planter and seat wall that is also proposed within the right of way and again, that's kind of a community. Um. Community amenity, we'll call it, where people gathering outside of the laundromat can sit and wait for their laundry to, um. Be prepared and cleaned, uh, so again, it's within the right of way, we know we have to get approval from the municipal, uh, council. But we believe it's, uh, the right location for it. Uh, you go to the next sheet, Josh. Okay, so the grading plan. Uh, so as I mentioned.
Just real quick, uh, on that last one where we, we talking about the planters. The two benefits that we looked at was one, it lines up with the rest of the street. And the other benefit is that it gives us, with that extra space, we're allowed to have more plantings there, right? Or just more, a little bit more room for plantings.
That, that's correct.
But we could, if the, if the staff, um, and the board determines that they want it pulled back, we could certainly pull it back. It just, it won't line up with the rest of the street and it will just have a little less room to do the plantings.
Yes. Uh, one, one thing I did forget to mention actually on this sheet is there is a proposed trash enclosure area. In the rear of the property that would be fenced in, uh, and I think it was a question in the, the traffic engineer's report. The, the intent is for those totes to be wheeled down on trash day, there's no trash truck. For being proposed to drive into the property to access that area.
And that's currently how it's done today, correct?
Correct. Okay, so the grading plan, so I, I, the proposed grading, uh, in the rear of the property in the parking area. Generally mimics the existing grading, the real changes in the elevations are, um. At the plaza area where, uh, as I noted in the existing condition, there was. uh, as I noted in the existing condition, there was a large drop off along that hedgerow. So we're utilizing that to our advantage um and cutting in, for lack of a better term, into the side of the hill to access that basement elevation with the laundromat. Uh, so the laundromat's access point will be generally at that one sixty-five and a half low elevation that I mentioned at the intersection. Um, and then the rest of the property uh is raised up, matching the existing elevations for the most part. Uh, the grading of the the ramp, as I went through, has been designed, sorry, not as a ramp, concrete walk has been designed to avoid being a ramp by staying under five percent at all locations. Um, and then an accessible path from the ADA stall is delineated on the grading plan here, and we can certainly provide it to the engineer as well and others. Again, we think that the location of the ADA stall as far as providing the ADA accessible path and working with some of the constraints on the property is the appropriate location. And in addition to that, and with the um maneuverability and the location of the accessible path going through the neighbors, there is a proposed placard sign that's going to be proposed along the edge of the ADA stall, which illustrates to anybody parking there how to uh maneuver the the accessible path to the public right away and then ultimately into the the structure.
And that that location um we picked also because of the length of the path as well. We we allow it to have less of a a slope coming from that direction rather than straight down?
That that's correct. It it lengthened the length of the path, which lowered the slope namely along the the stem of the driveway where it starts to get steeper.
So there's going to be a short wall there or something to differentiate differentiate the pedestrian paths from the vehicular paths?
There there would be no wall. The the pedestrian path would utilize the um paving path or the drivable path. It's just a uh an area of cross use.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, so the drainage plan, um the proposed change in impervious coverage exceeds the four hundred square foot threshold. Um, and therefore, you know, we have to comply with the small project stormwater management ordinance. Uh, to do that, the applicants proposing a green infrastructure device via porous pavement in the rear. So those six parking stalls that we were talking about in the rear would be porous pavement. They're designed to detain and infiltrate stormwater associated with the roof area as well as some of the the direct sheet runoff from the asphalt parking area. Um, there was a comment or a question within the engineer's memo about uh providing pre-treatment via leaf screens for the roof uh drains, and we would certainly comply with that as it's a requirement within the BMP manual for the state. And uh lastly, any overflow of the stormwater is directed back out to Witherspoon and would tie into the inlet along Witherspoon Street. Um, and any maintenance manual for that uh porous pavement system would be provided as a condition of any approval. Uh, and we would certainly work with the municipality's professional to make sure we meet their satisfac- satisfaction on the maintenance manual. Uh, so utility plan, uh similar to what's existing, uh, the proposed condition will also be served by water, public water, sewer, gas and electric. The proposed water demand is increased up to eleven thousand or a little more than eleven thousand gallons per day. Uh, and the sewer demand per the state code would be close to twelve thousand five hundred gallons per day for the office, retail and laundromat uses. I didn't go to the next sheet, Josh. Uh, lighting plan. So applicants purposely with the neighbors being residential is proposing a minimal exterior lighting plan, just enough to light the parking area. Uh, and they're doing that via one pole mounted light in the rear that's mounted at eight feet. That pole is directly next to the ADA stall. Um, there was a comment about some of the light is under the point-two-foot candle requirement, so we will adjust the lighting plan a little bit to meet that point-two-foot candle requirement within that parking area. Uh, so in addition to the parking area lighting, there are two building mounted lights proposed uh at the egress points of the um laundromat. Uh, and they are also mounted at eight feet above ground. Uh, and they are also LED lights. Uh, and then lastly, along that concrete path or walking path, there's low-lying downward-facing aerial lighting to light that path during um the winter months for the path in for anybody accessing the property via the the walk system. Uh, and those mounted lights are at two feet high uh and then downward facing.
Well, now we're going to switch to uh our traffic consultants.
Board members, any questions of the engineer? Excuse me, Josh. Any question of the uh civil engineer before we move over? I mean, we'll have the opportunity to ask questions later. Okay, and excuse me, board members, anybody want to take a break right now?
Yeah.
Can we do five minutes, um, Steve? That's okay?
Yeah, it's five minutes is fine. It is uh nine fifty. We'll we'll stop when we we join nine fifty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, hi, guys. Okay, uh, as soon as we get Harland and Bernice and Eve back, we're ready to go. Hi Eve, hi Harland. Just wait for Bernice for a minute here. Well, we have, we should wait for Bernice.
We can have George sworn in.
Now, why don't we do that?
So our next witness is George Jacamar, our traffic consultant, and um he has not been sworn in yet.
Mister Jacmar, whoa. Let me see. There you are. I'm so sorry. Do you swear? Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
To speed things up a little bit, I think uh we will accept Mr. Jack Moore as an expert witness since he's testified before us many, many times.
We appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next slide.
Are we are we waiting for somebody?
Well, should we wait um?
Up, up.
Okay, let's continue.
So we're starting uh exhibit A one. We're on slide ninety-nine, I believe.
Ninety-nine.
Yes.
All right, okay. Yep.
Thank you very much and good evening, uh, members of the zoning board. Um, I will talk a little bit about the parking spaces and the maneuvering in and out of the uh six parking spaces that are shown here on this drawing, and then I'll talk about traffic impact and then parking in general uh in in the surrounding uh neighborhood. Here you can see the maneuver of um handicapped van. You can see it's a van that's over seventeen feet, seventeen point two feet length that's driving in. That's the blue line is the forward maneuver and how that vehicle drives in, you know, using the access area, that five-foot crosshatched area that's next to the space, you know, to get into the parking space. And then in red, uh, you can see the reverse maneuver to get out of the space and how that vehicle can then exit back out onto Witherspoon Street nose first, which obviously is very important. They don't have to back out onto the street. The next slide um is slide number one hundred shows a similar maneuver for a regular standard car um into a standard space. That's the the third uh space from the right or third space from the left. And uh you can see the same kind of maneuver that vehicle can back uh onto uh back uh out of the space and then maneuver out. And these drawings, they can show, they show you that this can happen without the use of the shared space and the shared driveway next door. So it's a kind of a worst case analysis that we're showing if we were not to get that easement from the neighboring property. The next slide shows the same, I think, arrangement for the compact space. That's the the compact space is a slightly narrower space and you can see the compact car moving out of that space and also driving out forward. The only other point I want to mention here, if the easement, the shared easement could not occur here, the neighbor would have to back out onto Witherspoon Street. The neighbor does not, you know, can only maneuver forwards onto Witherspoon by using the space of this property. So that's for the parking maneuvering. Um, and as was mentioned before, it it is substandard, but it is better than what it is today. The distance that the vehicles have to get in and out is slightly better than uh what exists today. The next slide summarizes the traffic generation for the proposed project. So these are the additional vehicle trips that would be generated by this project. In the morning peak hours, we estimate eleven vehicle trips. In the uh afternoon peak hour, twenty-two vehicle trips. Saturday uh peak hour, eighteen vehicle trips. Uh, we got a comment from your traffic consultant uh indicating that maybe we were too low for Saturday traffic for the um laundromat. I think if we were to increase the laundromat traffic by twenty-five percent, it would still be less than the twenty-two would be twenty-one vehicles instead of eighteen vehicles in the Saturday peak hour. Uh, but we are in a range that is generally considered, you know, a very low traffic generation. In addition, you know, not all of these trips will end on the site. Some of them will end at the parking garage across the street, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later. And some of them may end on uh the the street itself, parking on the street. We developed these uh estimates based on IT traffic generation data. I think you all heard about that in the past. And we applied the um modal splits that we get from the census. So for instance, for the office employees, we use the modal split of thirteen point one percent for walking, biking and transit. So that's based on the census information that we get for people that work in this particular uh census tract. For the laundromat and the retail, we reduce the traffic duration by forty percent. And that's the 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 percentage given by the census tract for people that live in this neighborhood. For when they commute to work, they would use the various uh uh alternatives to the automobile. In fact, the census would show forty-four percent. We used forty percent reduction in this case. The next slide is a slide number. Um, it's hidden behind my screen here. I can't see it.
One oh three.
One oh three, thank you. Um, shows the the parking demand estimate. So this is a demand that we made again based on IT uh parking standards, uh parking uh ratios uh independently of what the zoning says. You know, you are in this zoning district that's close to another zoning district. There's all these zoning assumptions that you heard of. What would be my best estimate for the actual parking demand for this particular site? So yeah, there you can see for the office what the um what that would be uh given the uh square footage for the retail and for the laundromat. Uh, we estimate a total of sixteen point six, i.e. seventeen parking spaces. That would be my best estimate, you know, in terms of the parking demand that's actually generated uh in this area. Again, taking into consideration the kind of modal split that we have in this area, the thirteen point one percent for the office employees and the forty percent uh for the retail and laundromat uh patrons. I I should add, you know, that is these percentages are based on census for this very wide census tract that uh Princeton municipality is located in. Um, there's another reality to this, and that is the fact that um we will not provide any parking on the site for for laundromat patrons or retail patrons. The, the six spaces that are on the site will be reserved for the architecture office and there will be a sign that says parking reserved exclusively for the architecture office, Joshua Zinder, architect and designers. And, and the reason for that is we do not want to give the impression that the laundromat patrons can drive back there and park, you know, because there is only a limited number of parking spaces and there could be moments where you have more laundromat patrons and, and wanted. And also because it is, it is relatively tight parking, so it is something that, you know, people that work there and know the parking lot, that are used to the parking lot, that drive in and out on a, on a daily basis. They will maneuver relatively well in there, but people that don't know it are not gonna be, you know, maneuvering well, they will be more complicated, more complication than it's worth. Given the relatively small number of parking spaces that are in the bag, so that is an, an assumption that we make. And we do that on the basis that the, we believe that in fact, for the people going to the laundromat and the retail space at this location, the percentage of people walking and bicycling will be higher than forty percent, and I think personally significantly higher. Given the nature of the neighborhood, given the improvement that the municipality did along Witherspoon over the last two or three years. Substantially improving pedestrian circulation, improving the ADA compatibility, you know, there's even ADA parking spaces. The pedestrian crossings, the ramps and all of that, you know, that does represent the significant improvement and makes this very pedestrian friendly. And in addition, as you could see from the survey that was done earlier, the people that go to the laundromats, they are very much oriented, you know, they are very much pedestrian and bicyclists going to and from the laundromat. So we feel that this laundromat will be very successful, even though it does not have any parking on sites for the laundromat patients. Because the, the, the people will walk there, even the people that are in the apartment building across the street, Avalon, they will probably use this laundromat to some degree, even though they, I'm sure they have laundromat in the basement. Because here you can drop your laundry in the morning. And then you go back and pick it up in the evening, it will be dried and, and folded, you know, so you get a, a service that you don't necessarily have in the Avalon building itself.
But they, they have washer and dryers in their units. That's, that's not accurate statement.
I don't know if all of them have washer and dryers in their units, I don't know that. But still, they get the, they get it folded here, they can drop it off, you know, what we're saying is some of them will use it, obviously there may not be a lot, I don't know exactly how many units have their own washer and dryers in there. I, I, I don't know that. But the next slide, just to finish the discussion on parking, there is, before I get into this, this is the Avalon Garage. We also did a survey of the on-street parking using the mapping, aerial mapping applications that are available, Google Earth and year map. And there we identified that obviously over the last few years, the number of on-street spaces in the area, like a thousand feet north and southern, a thousand feet south of our site has decreased as the, the, the street was redesigned. But we do have still in the last year, two thousand twenty-four, we had fifteen spaces that were vacant and we had sixteen spaces that were vacant, or the two aerial photos that we could see. So there is some on-street parking available, the fact that it is metered obviously generates turnover that will help here. And then in the Avalon Garage, when, when we prepared this report, we did get a number of surveys that were done by the employees of Joshua Zinder, they went in and counted the cars and the vacant spaces. That particular garage has a total of six hundred ninety-one spaces, roughly seven hundred parking spaces. And every count that was done here, you can see, you know, in different times of the day, different days, had more than four hundred vacant spaces, you know, up to five hundred five. And those parking spaces are available on an hourly basis, they're available on a monthly permit basis. So they, there is substantial vacant parking capacity, very, in very close proximity to this site. So we feel, and we, as you heard earlier, the Joshua's in the office is using that parking for some of their employees, they pay on a monthly basis, a number of permits for their employees. And that's something that I imagine all the employees that work here. Except for the ones that park on-site and the six spaces will park, you know, the employees of the laundromat, the employee of the retail store, if they do drive, they would probably park in the Avalon Garage. The, the laundromat patrons may park there, they may park on-street. And then, you know, if it's a question of somebody driving to the laundromat, they may continue to drive to the laundromat that's in the shopping center today. The laundromat in the shopping center is very automobile friendly, you know, has free parking, fairly large parking areas. So that, you know, there's gonna be a certain distribution of the laundromat patrons based on their modal split, based on where they live and, and how they move to the laundromat. So I think in this case, we feel that this is a very comfortable situation in terms of parking because of that huge supply of parking spaces across the street, vacant spaces. And because of the alternative, for, for somebody who does insist on driving and wants to have a, a free parking space. They, and they don't find it on the street, they will find it at the Princeton Shopping Center. So that's our conclusion in terms of the, the parking situation. We feel it can work very well with the more limited spaces on the site, given the overall conditions in the neighborhood, the very pedestrian oriented neighborhood that we have here. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, the, the, the people who will use the laundromat or the retail will have no access to the, free access to the garage. Is that the case?
That, that's correct.
Yes.
Unless they're there for fifteen minutes. There's a fifteen-minute window and I think, I think the rates we showed a little while ago, then there's an hour rate. And then if somebody's an employee, like Zinder does, they would just buy the monthly or yearly permit. So that you would have, you would be paying for that for the employees.
Bruce, did you say you showed the rates?
Yes.
I must have missed that slide.
There was a slide previous.
Oh, there it was there, I saw it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I had a question, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Trump, uh, two of them actually. When, Josh, when your staff went to do sort of a count of the empty spaces?
Yes.
Did you speak with the Avalon folks to find out how many of those might have been monthly rentals that were occupied at that time, or was it just an eyeball kind of thing?
No, we, 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 we did not talk to Avalon about how many of them are monthly rentals and also to be clear, a certain number of them are used by two seventy-seven and two eighty-one, the other two, the other two buildings that are on that property. And there is an allocation for the offices and the restaurants there. And when we, you know, did these surveys, we did them during the day and in the evening. And, I mean, I've walked through that garage multiple times and it's always empty. But we did not ask Avalon, you know, what their allocation is.
Then, then the other question is, we're spending a lot of time focusing on the use of a laundromat. But you're not wanting the zoning board to restrict that space to only being able to be used as a laundromat from this point forward, are you?
That's a very good question, Harland, I was gonna ask that, so.
So sure, to be clear, we are applying for it to be a laundromat, that is what we are submitting for, if we have to change the use. I would expect that depending on what use it is and depending on the zoning officer's interpretation of that use, we may have to come back, but that is not what we plan, as I said. We have an LOI from one laundromat, we have two others that have strongly expressed interest. And there's another person, a laundromat, that was walking around town that dropped me an email just the other day. So that is the goal, that is the need, that is what, as I mentioned, I watch these people walking by our office every day, every day. And, and that is the goal for this, I have.
Mr. Zinder, you're saying that this would, you would have no issue if the board made that a condition of approval?
I would have no condition if they made that a condition of approval.
Okay.
Marlon, just as an aside, I've been in that garage at different times during the day and, and there are plenty of spaces in there.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Board members, any other questions of Mr. Jacamar?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Well, I guess one is, I almost want him to convince me, on the retail space on your first slide, the forty percent credit. I guess, how, how do you come up with forty percent? You don't know what the retail is, you don't know if it truly will serve the neighborhood because it could be like, the first person that bought it had a hair salon there. That person who like a lot of people, I, I knew personally, but hair salon people come with their own clients. You know, they're, they're usually established splitting off, I just don't know how you can convince us that a forty percent credit on a unknown retail is, is reasonable.
Yeah, it's a good question. So just to explain the forty percent, and that is basically the, the ongoing survey that's done by the federal government in, all over the United States. And it's a survey where they check on the, what they, what's called a home-to-work trip. So this is for all the people living in the, this particular census tract, how do they travel to work? That's the basic question. And the responses here are that forty, it was actually forty-four percent of the people traveled to work via walking, bicycling or public transportation. So these are people that are living nearby here, this particular neighborhood, that use these modes of transportation to take an actually longer trip to go to work. And so they don't work in the neighborhood, they work wherever people work, you know, some of them are in Princeton, some of them out in other municipalities, some even maybe in, in as far as New York City and so on. And I think it's a base, and you're right, we don't know what the retail use will be, but given the surface of it, it's not gonna be what, what I would call destination retail, like, like a, a, a big shop of something, you know, a fancy clothing store that attracts people from a longer area, it's too small for them. So I consider it as a residential neighborhood retail. And then on top of it, you know, obviously people are not gonna use the, the, the transit system to go to the, to this particular retail destination. Those that go from home to work via bus will most probably walk to this retail store. So I feel very comfortable using the forty percent, even though we don't know exactly what will be in there. Given the data, the statistics that we have for people living in that neighborhood, when they commute to work on a trip that's much, much longer than this trip to the laundromat and that particular retail.
Okay. Thanks for trying.
Well, it's, you know, it's based on years and years and years of experience looking at all these different uses. And, you know, though I, I honestly, I feel very comfortable with that number, and again, as I said earlier, you know, when you look at people that may drive, I'm thinking of the laundromat, may drive to the, or want to drive to the laundromat. They may decide, even people living in this neighborhood, they all decide then they'll drive to the laundromat that's in the Princeton Shopping Center, there they have free parking.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree with you on that as a, a possibility for people. Cause parking in this neighborhood on the, on the side streets, the non-Witherspoon street is tight as. And it's, it's really tight and the neighbors themselves are, you know, they're under great pressure, I, I was, I was the one, the parking permit task force that the town had a few years ago. So I, I, I know, I looked at it.
Yeah.
Could I just suggest another place that people might, maybe, maybe you're not aware of the parking, I, I'm sure, Michael, I know you know about the parking that's by four hundred Witherspoon. I, I think it'd be more likely that people would go there first if they wanted free parking rather than all the way over to the shopping center.
Yeah, that's your opinion. I, I drive, I would drive to the shopping center as opposed to walk from four hundred Witherspoon up to here.
Yeah.
That, that makes, now. Um, but, might be possible.
Remember, there's also a side here, you know, and people sometimes you talk about induced travel. You know, you probably have heard if some, if we widen the road somewhere in a congested area, you're gonna induce more traffic immediately. And it's true with parking too. And so if you were to provide, let's say, twenty parking, free parking spaces, of course, there will be plenty of cars coming in and, and parking here. And this is not the kind of neighborhood where you want to encourage that kind of behavior. I think Princeton in general is, is, you know, shifting to encouraging more walking and bicycling. And, and that's why on-street parking here is metered and people have to pay for it. I, I realize it's, it's not a simple issue and I, I know about the parking occupancies in all the side streets here, that's correct. But we feel, you know, and I think the fact that we have applicants, the, the applicant here has laundromat companies that are ready to move in. Shows that they feel that there's a market, a walk-in and bicycling market here that will make this laundromat a success.
I have a quick question, Steve.
Yes, please.
Josh, how many employees do you have?
Yeah. Currently, we have, I think, thirteen full-time equivalents, we have a number of part-time people, but, but I think we have thirteen. You know, we've had as many as eighteen over the years.
Do you expect to grow at all?
I mean, this plan, this plan anticipates us growing a little bit, yes, I think it covers up to about twenty, twenty architects or, or I should say employees working in the building.
And do you have a contract with the Avalon Garage for them to park in?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Please.
On, on park, on parking in Avalon and do, do you have the agreement with Avalon with a specific person? And I'll get to my next point.
I, I don't know what you mean by a specific person, they have, they have, I mean, we contacted them, we have, I think, six spots there right now. And if we want to add a spot, which we've added and subtracted over the years, we call them up and they add and subtract those we need.
Okay, let me, um, let me go to the real, the real question because you, you may know, you may not, your attorney may know, you, you may not. Regarding, here's a condition that was put on the garage way back when, before the apartments were, when the apartments were approved and the garage were. Parking spaces shall not be used by developers of any new development in the municipality to satisfy their off-track parking requirement unless agreed to by the planning board and the garage owner and subject to easement rights on lot fifteen. I don't know if you're aware of that, it's, you can deal with it, but it.
I mean, I'm not aware of that, but, you know, and, and.
And I got that from Derek, just, just so you know.
Yeah, I, I, to me, I, I read that as satisfying the parking requirement in the sense of getting an off-site de-dedicated area. We're not.
de-dedicated area. We're not saying that, we're requesting a variance.
Yes.
Support parking. So what we're saying is, though, people that will have predominantly people walking and biking, but the people that are going to drive to any of the businesses in the area would be using that area as the, you know, because there's a public parking garage that's gigantic and empty, half-empty all the time.
Let me, let me read it one more time because I want to make sure, you know, at least hear what I what I say. The parking spaces shall not be used by developers of any new development in the municipality to satisfy their off-site parking requirement. And then it goes unless agreed to by the planning board, the garage owner, and subject to easement rights, lot fifteen. Um, you can take it up with Derek or probably Justin, but I found that out today.
Yeah.
Isn't that, isn't that for every park, every property? I mean, it, you know, we're asking for the variance specifically recognizing that that we have a parking shortfall. We don't necessarily think it's what's what the calculation is, but we are acknowledging it. Um, you know.
I'm just putting it out there. Like I say, you probably need to resolve it with with Derek on what's your next move, if it's a problem right now. I don't know.
Well, why don't we move on to playing testimony? Is any, any other?
I have just one last question. Um, what about uh visitor parking? Are all of this, all of the spots are just for employees, right? You.
Which spots?
Uh, the the ones, yeah, the 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 six um.
The six spots would be for our office. It might be for visitors coming to our office. Um, but they would be for our office.
Okay.
I just have one quick question, Mr. Jacques Monde. When you talked about space number three, you talked about a compact car. Are these, uh, is that the only compact car? Are they all compact cars?
There's only one compact space. The the, there was another graphic that showed the parking space with the standard car.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, all of them meet the 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 size requirements with the exception of that one space, one compact.
But I'm not, you know, they're eight-foot spaces which are narrow. Um, I'm just more concerned about backing out to sixteen feet is pretty tight. All right. We can, we can move.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I did have one question regarding turning templates.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Um, if you can go back to, I believe it was slide one hundred with the maybe ninety-nine, um, for the ADA, it'd be slide ninety-nine. Thank you. Um, so the ADA space utilizes the access aisle to park into that parking space. Um, if that ADA space
To maneuver in.
Right. Um, if that ADA space was relocated, um, that access aisle obviously would no longer exist up against the building there. Um, would, would a vehicle be able to park up against the building in essentially up against where that the access aisle is for that ADA space? As currently shown.
ADA space moves, let's say, if that moves to the left, the access aisle has to move also to the left. And then the 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 vehicle that moves into that space um will have uh, yeah, will have a more difficult time to get in and out because
I like the
will be against the building.
I'd like to chime in. The the challenge is that if we did look at moving the accessible spots over and um to be on this side, and the challenge was if the accessible spots are on this side, we would need to build a wall along the property line to reduce the grade to allow for for somebody who's um, in a wheelchair to be able to get down our driveway at less than one to twenty slope at a five percent grade. That's why we put it in this location so that it allows for an accessible egress off of the site. So, I mean, it's specifically there for a reason. It wasn't done arbitrarily.
Okay, un-un-understandable. Uh, I mean, I'm reading the grading plans and it looks like the spot that has the number six in it may be able to to meet there. I know you're you're regrading the whole parking lot. Um, and if you could meet that same uh route that's shown uh on that diagram um, from that space, I think it would improve the improve uh placing the ADA space on the shortest accessible route. Um, I do see the concern of of having a parking space against there. Um, so ultimately what I was getting at is is if uh several spaces were reduced in width from nine feet uh to eight feet or eight, and if all spaces are reduced to to eight and a half feet, you could pick up some of that additional space adjacent to the building um, to provide that clearance to allow a vehicle to park in the northernmost parking space.
This is an aside. I don't have the what my larger set of drawings open. At the end of the new building, that's a staircase, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it? So if somebody were to use that staircase and that space were up against the, if it shifted over and the driver and the walking, the access aisle was eliminated, you couldn't use that.
Well, I think Dan is saying that if we shrink the spaces, then then we could still have a space at the end. And and I would say that that we would gladly sit down with Dan and the town to resolve, you know, this, um, if the project was to move forward from tonight, you know, I mean, we can work. This is not a.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure hopefully we can come to a resolution, you're out.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I bring it up, though, is if there is a reduction of the spaces, uh, it is a design waiver which would need to be granted by the board. Um, so just something to consider as as we're talking uh during this application, that wouldn't necessarily be just a compliance review issue.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I know you have your traffic engineer. I think he's still here tonight. And I don't know if you want to ask him if he has any comments or questions for Mr. Jacques Mar. Where's Mr. Harry is. Sir, we know, I'm I'm not sure if we swear you in, so let me just swear in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I really don't have a lot of questions for George. I think he addressed most of my comments. I I I do have um a little bit of concern um regarding the uh ADA location, and I think Dan brought that up. Um, with somebody on wheelchair will have to traverse behind path cars along the driveway to assess the the access slopes in front. I I think that concerns me a little bit in terms of the hazards post because they're sitting low below the cars that are parked. I understand that, I I mean, these are familiar drivers, but still, it is a hazard. Uh, I think relocating the ADA space closer to the uh driveway gives a clear sight line for uh anybody on wheelchair. That is one concern I have. Um, the the a a little subtle concern is really more about, I I I think one of the uh board members brought this up about the um uh laundromat uh and and the office space parking. Um, it it just seems there is no there's no redundancy at all. This is every every uh parking is pushed to the street. Uh, and the assumption that almost everybody will walk or bike to the place. Uh, it's a little less than conservative to me. I I I think there there has to be some um some forgiveness in in the plan. Um, and and I asked a question in my report. I had asked, what happens on weekends when the office is closed? Is the parking spaces there still off limits to everybody? Um, I and I I had testimony that signing will be, it will be showing it's for office use only. So it it, there are issues, there are certain times when uh drivers will drive in there, they expect to get parking. They expect to park there. Is that violation of their expectancy that I'm concerned about? When they come in there, especially um ADA, if somebody who uh who is on wheelchair, who needs to use the laundromat would would not find parking on the street that is accessible for them to get to the laundromat or even park at the Avalon to assess the laundromat, even if it's one car. So I think there is no, no really redundancy for that. And that's the only little concern I have. And I was hoping to hear a little bit more of that. I'm more concerned about ADA uh persons. And also, if if the assumption is that cars are very gonna, are gonna be limited, wo- would you consider increasing biking, uh bike space, uh parking? If you're expecting more people to bike to the location? So those are the kind of things I was hoping to hear that, you know, we we don't, we don't expect a lot of cars, and so we're increasing bike spaces or we're providing this kind of provision for ADA. I I I I I don't know if you can address that, one way or the other. That's the only concern I have. In terms of traffic volume, I don't think uh you're gonna have high traffic, but there's parking and the operation itself. You already have very narrow drive aisles. And yeah, two-way circulation is going to be a problem. Uh, so uh, those are the kind of issues that I have. And I also had made a comment about uh the ADA accessible aisle that is eleven feet. You 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 have a minimum of eight feet. I I still don't understand why you have a constrained location. And you don't want to use the eight feet. Why the eleven feet?
Because it's a van.
That's what Dan was also saying. You can cut down these spaces and be able to fit uh the vehicles and they can also maneuver better in that space. That that's all I I have to say. I mean, if you want to address any of them, that's right.
Well, I can, I can address some of them, George can address some of them. Um, just with with regard to the ADA. Okay, the American Disabilities Act says that we have to take people on a common path of travel. It specifically says bringing people into the back of a building is not acceptable. Okay, that is not an acceptable. So bringing them to the front of the building and with our solution allows for them to park there. There are handicap spots within a block on Witherspoon Street. Okay, so you could park, you know, on Witherspoon Street in an ADA spot, okay, and walk and walk or roll your your wheelchair. And and the town just added a crosswalk directly in front of our building. Okay, that's level. Um, so you can, you can go through that path. And I believe very strongly that that's more in keeping with the intent of the American Disabilities Act than it is for somebody to go behind the building. Okay, now, I believe our civil engineer uh mentioned earlier that the required size and we are being required to have a van accessible spot. Okay, the size that we have documented is the size that is required. It's, I believe it's eleven feet and has a five-foot, five-foot side aisle. And that's what's required. As far as the other components, George, you want to chime in?
Well, the 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 eight feet is is the minimum required. It doesn't have to be eleven feet.
For a van, it has to be, being told it's a van accessible spot. Um, Kelly, you want to chime in? I know you're turning yourself off.
No, I I think I can, I can address it. I I I think there are two options. One is either eleven feet for the van plus five feet for the access aisle or it's eight feet for his regular car plus eight feet for the access. And it always comes down to sixteen feet. That's our understanding. So I, we would love to narrow it, but I I don't think we're not allowed to do it because it's either eight plus eight or eleven plus five. That's my understanding of the ADA. Um, I think, you know, in terms of ADA access, and I leave that up to Joshua, maybe we can allow, when we say uh no parking except for Joshua's in the architects and so on, could say except for ADA space. And I think it's my understanding, whenever there is an ADA space, any ADA person can use it. And so we could make the ADA space accessible, uh 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 allowable space for a patron that goes to the laundromat. I think that may be relatively easy to do. But again, we don't want to encourage you know, more laundromat patients to drive back there because it is well, it's been now, and it makes a difference in terms of parking. If it's somebody who parks there every day, it's an employee who knows to drive in and out versus somebody who, you know, drives in there and maybe drives only once a month or something like that. Uh, so that's why we feel that's the best arrangement. I also recommend that maybe, you know, the that the laundromat on their website say, we do not have onsite parking to be very clear to the patrons that go there. This is a place for people walking and bicycling as much as possible. Um, and if somebody wants to drive, they can drive and and but they also have the choice of the free parking at the Princeton Shopping Center.
And with regard to the question that you had about um biking, you know, we do have more than double, twice the amount of bike parking that is required. You know, we are putting, you know, eight, a minimum eight bike spots directly in front of the laundromat. Um, so we we are focused on that as well.
I think you have a total of twelve, right, Josh?
Yeah, we have, we have three in the back um by the uh, you know, at our, at the porch entrance to our office. Um, you know, we hope we can get more in the covered bike parking area, but you know, right now, it seems like we'll be able to get at least three in the covered area. We're going to try to get one or two more.
And by comparison, the ordinance requires six.
Yes. Do we go on to our planner?
I think we can. At this point, we have a little under twenty minutes. Okay, please, continue.
Okay, our planner, John, are you there? Yes, we need to get him sworn in. This is John McDonough.
Mr. McDonough, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, John's licensed. Um, he's presented before this zoning board before. Would you like us to go through?
He's testified.
Thanks.
Yeah, as long as your planning license is is valid in New Jersey, I think you'd be good to go.
Yes, current and in good standing on the state level and national AICP as well. Take it away, Christopher.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I think I can be relatively brief here. The board's heard a lot of testimony tonight, which forms a good predicate for uh the relief that the applicant is seeking. I'm going to take it back to the statute. Um, at the end of the day, the list of the relief here is not really that long. Um, so I think we can give it to you in in relatively short order. Um, we're going to start here with the exhibit packet that's been given to you, uh previously entered, and we're now on page one oh five. This is going to take you to page one thirteen or slide one thirteen, which will be the the last couple sheets here in the deck. First image is a satellite image just to show the subject property. As you heard, it's a single tax lot, block six nine zero seven, lot number seventeen. It's a little less than ten thousand square feet, nine thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, presently developed as the office for Joshua's indoor architecture and design. We know it was a historic or is a historic home, the Annetta V. Taylor House. Um, surrounding land use concept uh context. From a pure physical planning standpoint, suffice it to say, I think we can see here that we are talking about a transitional lot uh where sometimes these uh additional floor area relief becomes appropriate. You've got the massive Avalon Bay off to the right there or to the east, and then we transition to the smaller lot residential to the west, north, and 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 south. Notwithstanding the physical planning aspect of this as well as a transitional lot, suffice it to say, from a zoning standpoint, we are at a transitional lot as well. You heard through all of the witnesses before me that we are at the convergence of multiple zones here. You've got the R four, you've got the R nine, you've got the RB, you've got the HMC, and then, of course, And then, of course, you've got the influence of this overlay, this AHO dash seven overlay zone, which, as you heard through Josh's testimony, could produce a larger building here with lesser parking demand. I believe it comes down to five or so spaces would be required here for a for a larger building. Josh, you can go to the next couple of slides here, and I won't dwell on either one of them. But they basically show the site in the context of the neighborhood and how you do have this much larger uh massive building that does have influence on this particular site, a visually prominent corner in the community. You heard about the practical difficulties of putting a structure on the corner back in the day and how that is now feasible. Uh this is sort of going to complete the site uh with the historic aspects staying intact and then, of course, complementing it with uh the new divide and then the new portion uh that will meet the needs of uh of this end user. Um at the heart of this application, we are here, and Josh, you can keep going through these. Um the main point here is the laundromat land use is a permitted use in the zone district. We're not asking for any relief in that regard with respect to the B one. It is a land use that follows rooftops more than it follows headlights. And again, suffice it to say, you can see rooftops um all around the area here. So this will certainly accommodate a local scale uh walkable nature of the area, highly walkable nature of the area. And it's conducive to a local service type business, which is right in line with what your twenty twenty-three master plan uh would look for. Importantly, your master plan twenty twenty-three also talks about economic development goals and eliminating barriers to creating economic growth. One of the fundamental tenants of the master plan is to retain existing businesses. And you have a business here that has a longstanding commitment to the community. Your master plan talks about um, of course, maintaining the community as a a community of excellence. You have a top-tier architecture firm here of the highest quality. Uh this is looking to enhance that established business with the commitment to the community. I think that's certainly going to go towards the positive criteria of this application. We're in the B one zone district. The intent of the zone is implicit to the name to provide a variety of business and service uses, which is exactly what our applicant is doing here. We have D relief, but it is not use relief. It is related to the the bulk of the building. And you've got a lot of visual and functional evidence as to how this site does work uh and fit with the plan before you with the context of the neighborhood. All of the proposed uses are permitted in the zone. No D relief is required in that regard. In terms of zone conformance, importantly, the project fully conforms not only as to use, it substantially conforms as to most of the bulk controls in your B one zone. This lot that you're looking at here is especially spacious or exceptionally large in the context of the zoning. It is more than double the zoning requirement. Absolutely no relief being requested here for the lot coverage. And as you've heard, the building setbacks on all sides comply with your zoning ordinance. In terms of the relief, the applicant is asking you to move on four buckets of relief. Number one is that D variance for floor area, zero point seven three six is what's being required here under the letter of your ordinance or proposed here under the letter of your ordinance, where zero point six would be the maximum that's allowed. Again, if you went back to slide number fifty or something in the fifties, as Josh showed you, without the covered porch, without the bike storage, which we think are constant context-sensitive design elements, you would be at zero point six four, so just an uptick above what the ordinance requirement of zero uh point six would be. Most importantly, based on all of the testimony, the site can accommodate any problems with that additional floor area. You've got good predicate testimony in terms of sufficing with respect to parking demand, water demand, sewer demand, um and all of the community service demands that would be associated with that additional floor area. In terms of the justification for that D four relief, we'll go to the statutory positive and negative criteria. In terms of the positive criteria, the project as a whole will advance multiple purposes of the land use law at NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash two. Especially Purpose A, the project as a whole will promote the general welfare with enhancements to that established business, JZDNA. Uh Purpose G, the project promotes the planning goal for a variety of uses and appropriate locations according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens by delivering permitted uses, including professional offices, neighborhood-scale retail, neighborhood-scale service in a commercial business zone district. Essentially, with respect to the laundromat, this is going to be uh bring the use closer to the population that it will serve. Uh you just go back to that survey that Josh showed you at the very outset of his testimony. Additionally, we see the advancement of Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment with an aesthetic focal point to anchor and beautify a visually prominent corner in the community. Uh next, Purpose M, the planning goal to promote efficient use of land with adaptive reuse of an existing building, infill development that is compatible with the area on an exceptionally large lot. And then finally, Purpose J and Purpose P, which have some interplay here with respect to historic preservation, which remains a fundamental goal of uh all land use planning in New Jersey. And Purpose P in particular talks about providing or enabling concentrated development to accommodate growth while preserving historic sites. And again, we're in that historic district, so we think this adds to the contributing aspect. With respect to the negative criteria, based on all the testimony, the site can accommodate any problems with the additional FAR. Visually, you've got a hundred-plus exhibits here to show infill development compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh this here perhaps is the home run shot to show the influence of what's around us. Functionally, again, we've talked about traffic, parking, water, sewer demand. In short, there is substantial credible evidence that the development will not exceed the carrying capacity of the land. Therefore, relief can be granted without detriment to the public. And likewise, relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan. This relates to a distinct lot, not the whole B one zone district. It's a corner lot, a special corner lot, a transitional lot right across the street from that big building that you see across the street. You've got relief for the conditional use, which again, I think the predicate is there. You have some criteria in your ordinance that would justify the conditional use relief for one shared parking space. The three criteria are found in section T ten dash B dash three two one in your ordinance. It's threefold. Number one, the parking space serves as a use within feasible feasible distance. Uh the use is immediately adjacent, so that I think is a very logical justification. Number two, there are no nuisance factors. The area is already used for parking. There is buffering adjacent to lot number sixteen. And then finally, there is no additional traffic. Uh the area is already used for parking, and this is replacement in kind. I'll close by saying there's a bucket of C relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on. The predicate for all of that relief is there under the flexible C balancing test as a better as a better zoning alternative for the property where the benefits that I've just given you as the application as a whole would outweigh or substantially outweigh any detriments. The front setback, seven point five feet as opposed to ten is for a retaining wall, not for the building, for those accessible pathways to the building. The building height is just a foot, foot and a half above the ordinance allowance, and that maintains the building height that's there. The building is not going up, but the grade is dropping down, so I see that as somewhat of a technical variance. The buffer, you've got the justification for there and the practical difficulty if this applicant were to comply with all the buffers. Uh we've got a shed-sized building that fits on the property. The driveway width is inherent to the shared nature of the driveway. And the parking supply, I won't be redundant. You've got good, solid evidence from all of the witnesses, in particular Georges, before me. Finally, uh Mister Chairman, there's relief for design exceptions. Um I'll fall back on the testimony of the designers. That's a lesser standard, more relaxed standard of proof. Um it's reasonable, it's appropriate. Um there's a level of impracticability whereby strict or literal enforcement of the ordinance, in my view, um with sort of no practical planning purpose with respect to the parking space dimension and the parking aisle width. Um all said, this is a very, very good application, very good use of land. Most importantly, meets the statutory criteria for approval, and therefore my planning conclusion is that approval is warranted. Um that's all I have on direct, Christopher.
Board members, any question of Mister McDonough? Okay, uh Mister McDonough, can you take your screen down? Um, thank you.
You're welcome. Um. It's actually not me throwing that, Mister Chairman, so.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say uh um in conclusion, thank you all for your time tonight. We hope you find our proposal compelling. Uh the use and design also a valuable addition to the powerage of our community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, um we, it is, it's ten fifty-four. Um what we would do is, at this point, is allow the applicant's attorney to sum up before we went to public comment. Well, first of all, we'd ask the questions of the board members of any of the witnesses. Um and then we would uh allow the attorney to sum up and we go to public comment. But I don't think um unless, are there any questions, board members, that you have now?
Michael is a.
Do you have a question, Michael?
Um, yeah. Do we wanna, you know, I was thinking hear from any of municipal staff in response, you know, whether it be agree, disagree, whatever, of what's been presented um regarding the concerns that staff has made earlier and wanted to address. And I'm specifically talking about the planner, um zoning officer, um Elizabeth Kim. Um, cause quite honestly, in some things, I'm deferring to them. We heard from our our traffic consultant. So that's my question, and it's more to you, Mister Chair, and to the board.
My feeling is I'd like to hear from our staff and comments on the on the testimony. Um what I think we should do is maybe defer that, and that would be the first order of business when we came back into session at the continuation date. Would that be acceptable to everybody? I mean, we have a, we have a break in the application. We can't finish it tonight. So we're gonna have to break it at some point. It would be, I believe, um Claudia, the the uh the audio tape of this hearing would be available on the website.
Yes, the video will be on.
Well, the video, sure. So I, and and so I know there's a couple of things I want, I made notes as I went along, that I wanna listen to again. So we could do that, you know, again, board members, you could do that, and then it then this thing will be fresh in your minds, and then the first order of business would be to hear from our staff on their comments.
Do we have to break at eleven? Can't we keep going?
Can. I mean, board members, what do you wanna do?
I mean, I'm I'm tired, but I'd rather keep going and come back and revisit the whole thing again.
Well, just keep in mind that you, I don't know if anybody in the public wants to make comments. Somebody, I believe, is out there beyond the head count that would account for staff and uh everybody else. So I have no idea, but if you're gonna keep going, then you'd have to take public comment as well.
May maybe we could get a uh hands raised for anybody in the audience to just get a poll to see who's planning on speaking.
Fine, that's good. All right, if there's anybody in the ordinance, in the audience who plans on speaking on behalf of this indication, can you raise your hand so Claudia can see if there is anyone in fact? Claudia?
I don't see any hands. I'm looking at it.
I don't either, so. Um, but again, we're only gonna get uh yeah, Claudia, did anybody indicate they'd like to speak?
No hands.
Okay, um.
I'm just voicing my opinion. Other people may have, may wanna take a break.
Board members, what's your preference?
I'm tired too, but I do think it's important to I I I think it's an important thing to try to resolve if we can tonight.
Do you wanna try to finish tonight?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
If that's not, I don't know if that's unreasonable or not. I'm not sure.
Who knows? We don't know. Um, well, again, I think Michael's comment about the staff commenting on the testimony, I think, is important. So maybe we start with that right now. And then we go to executive, and then we go to public comment, which there may be none, and then we go to executive session. So that way we get all the testimony, and so um we have Dan Weisman, we have uh Jason Musco, and we have Elizabeth Kim.
Um. Question.
Yes.
Yeah, uh do you wanna go past midnight?
You know, I don't.
I mean, if you really wanna finish tonight, it may be one o'clock before we're done.
Oh, no, I don't think, uh, you know, my feeling is there's there's probably gonna be a lot of discussion about this um because of the complexity of the application, so.
I I, you know, I I agree with you, Chair. Because of the complexity of the application, in my mind, if there's those people that think this is a simple application, when you look at each and every, and I'm not saying I'm voting against any number of of variance requests, but they need due consideration and talked about individually, which I think we got off a little bit last special meeting. And and Karen had to ask us to justify and uh a little bit more and yeah, um. And it's even, as I say, one report, environmental commission, has never been presented to us. And maybe, I don't know.
Well, no, I I I agree with you.
Some people are looking at it as a very simple application.
That works. I don't buy that for a minute, but you know, I'm, on the other hand, we've been sitting here for three and a half hours. You know, why walk away from it now if we could get it done in the next forty-five minutes?
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, please.
I don't see this getting done in the next forty-five minutes, in all honesty.
I agree.
You have seven twenty-eight Bun Drive coming back next week, special meeting. Um that's for a parking study. Uh you're familiar with that case. I don't think there's a lot more that we can discuss with that. We could put this on after that or um and then we could have a couple hours of time when it's not gonna be, you know, after eleven o'clock. Um and it is a complicated case. There's a lot of variances.
If that's the way people feel, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I I think the fact that it's taken us this long and we haven't even gotten to a discussion is it's not gonna be a quick conclusion.
Here's what I would suggest. I would suggest that we cut it off now. The, when we come back, we'll hear from the Environmental Commission. We still have to hear again back from the fire chief. We'll hear from our ex- our staff members. And then I would encourage the board members to listen to the, or look at the video just to refresh themselves, so we're all fresh. And so the question would be then, when would this be continued to?
Next week.
Next week, after the after the other case.
Yeah.
Hmm. I I just wanna be on the record as saying, I don't think of this as simple. I think of it as important. And I was worried that maybe the next time we could listen, you know, pick it up might be October or something. So the fact that it's next week is good news.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, also.
What date are we looking at, just so we?
Next Wednesday.
July thirtieth, Chris.
Okay.
Now, I think that so I'm assuming the board would like the applicant's consultants back again on July thirtieth.
I think, I think it's important because we're gonna have our, we're gonna have our staff members in there. And and so I think it's important to have everybody who was here the first time back again. Me.
Yeah, I'll just have my, they're all online, just chime in just to confirm that you're available um on uh July thirtieth. It would be at seven thirty uh same time.
You would be, you would be after our first application. So you would be second on the agenda.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What what's? What, what's the first application, just so we have an idea is?
The first application is a continuation, Chris. It's an appeal of the zoning officers, uh.
Ah.
The termination on a zoning permit.
Okay.
I'm available.
I think it, I think. I think it looks good for the thirtieth.
Kelly, can you do it?
Yes, he said he could.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Yes, George.
Although. I will be in Europe, but I can do it.
Ooh. You are now too, right? George, George.
I'll be six hours ahead, but I can do it.
Let's grab a glass of orange juice.
Yeah, George is in Luxembourg right now, right?
It's, it's five o'clock in the morning.
We can keep going.
But I can't pay you guys.
Derek, can I ask you? To uh see, check with the fire. Chief Marshall.
Yes, sir.
To, and, and also make sure or at least get a copy of. Or a testimony from the environmental people.
I mean, I, I can read their, their cogent. Points into the record. It's an executive summary, um.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. That are board members?
Yes.
Okay, good.
For the benefit of anybody who is listening tonight, this application's being carried to July thirtieth. And there will not be any further noticing by the applicant, so you're hearing tonight what the new hearing date will be.
And it's uh July thirtieth at seven thirty, and the link that they use this evening is the same link?
I believe so.
And uh. Let me check on that one second.
Okay.
Yeah, in either case, the link is available, I should say, on the website as part of the record. On the agenda on the website, on the municipal website.
John McDonough, are you available? You, you're muted.
Lock it in.
Right.
Okay. Lot going on here.
Yeah, well, we really do appreciate your time. Um, I know it's late, especially for George. Or early, I should say, but uh, thank you very much for, for all the time, and we look forward to um. Getting to a conclusion uh next week.
Bar very thorough presentation, so. All right, well, let's uh, we'll, we'll call it a night. Thank you all for coming. And it's eleven oh six. I would say the meeting is adjourned.
Well done, Steve. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
What, Stephen?
Well done.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night. Night.
Bye, George.
Dwight.
Bye, Claudia.
Bye-bye. Have a good night.
Good night.